Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call to order a regular city commission meeting for Tuesday, June 4th, 7:00 PM. We have roll call, please.
Commissioner Houdak.
Here.
Commissioner Parnas.
Here.
Commissioner Preston.
Here.
Vice Mayor Drosky.
Here.
Mayor Gantz.
Here. Could everyone please stand for a moment of silence and then our pledge of allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd just remind everyone to please have your cellphones turned to silent. We have approval of the city commission meeting minutes for regular city commission meeting minutes for May 7th, 2019, city commission workshop meeting minutes for May 6th, 2019, an acknowledgement of our city board meeting minutes for community redevelopment agency, February 21st, 2019, marine advisory board meeting minutes for September 17th, 2018, March 21st, 2019, and April 18th, 2019, our community appearance board meeting minutes for May 8th, 2019, our code compliance meeting minutes for October 9th, 2018, and February 12th, 2019, and Hillsborough Inlet District meeting minutes for April 15th, 2019.
I've been advised that those need to be two separate votes, so I'll make a motion to approve each of them.
Okay, so we'll just do the approval of the city commission meeting minutes for May 7th, 2019, and May 6th, 2019. Commissioner Parnas, is that still your motion?
Yes.
Second.
Motion of second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Acknowledgement of our city board meeting minutes for the community redevelopment agency for February 21st, 2019, marine advisory board, September 17th, 2018, March 21st, 2019, April 18th, 2019, community appearance board meeting minutes for May 8th, 2019, code compliance meeting minutes for October 9th, 2018, and February 12th, 2019, and the Hillsborough Inlet District meeting minutes for April 15th, 2019.
So who?
Second.
Motion of second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Pass unanimously. We have approval of the city commission meeting agenda for June 4th, 2019.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Preston, second by Commissioner Parnas. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Our awards and recognitions. Tonight, we're proud to honor one of our own here in recognition of her commitment to the safety of the residents of Deerfield Beach through emergency management planning. Tina Jew is the principal planner in the Planning and Development Services Department. Although her responsibilities in the city mainly include planning and zoning-related functions after the events of Hurricane Irma, she was tasked by then-Assistant City Manager David Santucci to coordinate emergency management planning for the city of Deerfield Beach. In this time, Tina has begun the development and emergency management program that will meet county, state, and federal requirements, as well as meet the operational needs of the city during and after a disaster, and to ensure that the city is eligible to receive maximum reimbursement following a disaster. Emergency management planning is required to ensure that the city is readily prepared, resilient, responsive, and able to redevelop during and after storms or other disastrous events. Within the development of the emergency management program, Tina has identified what is needed to update the city's comprehensive emergency management plan and to develop a post-disaster redevelopment plan, debris management plan, and continuity of operations plan for City Hall. These plans will create the framework for city operations and preparation of city staff to operate and function as a government during disaster situations. Tina has also identified funding for these programs, and the city has recently awarded a grant from the American Planning Association to assist in the development of the post-disaster redevelopment plan. Funding requests were also applied for from FEMA's Hazard Mitigation Grant Program to harden City Hall. Although the plans are not yet complete in awareness of the 2019 hurricane season, which began on June 1st, please join us in recognizing Tina Jew for her hard work and efforts in helping the city of Deerfield Beach's emergency management efforts. Tina? We are also proud to recognize this fantastic group of people for their year-long commitment to our city's Mentor Program. This is the second year the city has participated in the Reading Pals and Tutor Mate Program in our local elementary schools. The city's Mentor Program allows city employees to mentor first and second grade students at Deerfield Beach Public Schools. Both programs focus on reading and require a year-long commitment from our mentors. Reading Pals, which we have, now that mentor reads with a first or second grade student for an hour once a week throughout the school year. This program is in partnership with the United Way of Broward and Broward County School Board. We have Tutor Mate as well. The mentor reads with the first grade student for 30 minutes once a week virtually. This online program allows mentors to tutor directly from their workplace or location and save on commute time. Tutor Mate is a partnership with Innovations of Learning and Broward County School Board. This goal of both of these programs is to increase grade level reading in our local schools, and we really want to thank the people who have come forward to volunteer their time for a complete year. So Alexa Ogburn, George Sullivan, Latasha Flint Troy, Jane Hafer, Nicole Giordano, Suzanne Scott, Vicky Placid Picard, Donna DeFranzo, and David Santucci, thank you very, very much.
Item number three is a resolution of the city commission of the city of Deerfield Beach, Florida approving the 2019-2020 Community Development Block Grant Action Plan, providing for implementation and technical revisions, providing an effective date. And this is a public hearing.
Mr. Santucci?
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Commission. If I could, I'd like to bring Vicky up to speak on this item.
Sure.
Thank you.
Good evening. Vicky Placid Picard, Community Development Director. What you have before you tonight is the 2018-2019 City... Start over. 2018-2019 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan. Just to give you a quick overview of what CDVG is. Community Development Block Grant is a federally funded program through the Department of Housing and Urban Development. The city is an entitlement city, which means that we have a population of over 50,000. So every year, we receive an allocation or allocation set aside. In order for us to get those funds, we have to complete an annual action plan. In 2015, the commission approved a five-year plan, so this is the final year of that five-year strategic plan that was done. And each year, we identify projects that meet the strategies and the priorities that we identified in 2015. So next year, we'll do a new plan, but this is the last year of that current plan. So in terms of identifying projects in under CDVG, they must meet three national objectives. The first one, a project must benefit low to moderate persons, aid in the prevention or elimination of slum and blight, and urgent need. After there is a natural disaster, we can use that fund to assist in whatever repairs we have. Went over that in regards what the funds are for. And then, just to quickly go through what the new funding year... What funds will be used for the new funding year. Home repair, we're using, sort of setting aside $200,000. Purchase assistance, 202. And those programs are a combination with other funding sources that we receive, state housing trust fund, as well as the home funds. Because the trust fund, we're not receiving our full allocation due to the Sadowski Act, the Sadowski funds not being allocated through the Florida legislature. That's why we're putting a good portion of our funds there, because the home repair is a demanded program that our residents, highly demanded program our residents utilize, so want to be able to provide assistance to them. Each resident can receive up to $50,000. Same thing for purchase assistance, helping individuals to purchase homes in the city of Deerfield Beach. They can also get up to $50,000. Commercial facade is a project we've done in the past. The goal is to highlight our Dixie Highway if there are individuals, property owners, commercial property owners on Dixie that needs to do external repairs. That's what the funding is for. For our public service, we've worked with the Center for Active Agent. The senior transportation program is very popular in the city. We also provide funding for adult daycare. As you know, we've been losing funds through the state through our programs, so this is funding we've added to that in the senior health and wellness, as well as planning and administration, which is a total of $659,318. Just a quick presentation to give you the projects.
Thank you, Vicky. City manager, any comments?
No, Mayor, that's all we have.
Okay. Anyone from the public here to comment on this item?
Gwendolyn Clark Reed, 1430 Southwest Sixth Way, Deerfield Beach. Mayor, Commissioners, Vice Mayor, and City Attorney. I attended the pre-planning meeting in February. I was very disappointed with the turnout. There were hardly any folks there, any of the community, at that public hearing. At that time, I mentioned to Mr. Picard that this program also can be used for some youth funding. And the city of Deerfield has not had that in its plan in the past five years. So I'm hoping that when we go to next year and we're doing a new plan, that we will look at putting some youth program funding in this CDVG program. Also, a lot of our residents don't have mortgages on their homes, so therefore, they do not qualify for this programming. So I'm asking whoever's the Broward League of Cities and the National League of Cities person here in the commission, that that's something that really needs to be looked at, because those persons are not permitted to get any of this funding, to utilize any of this funding, because they do not have a mortgage. And that is, should not be. So I'm hoping that some way, the federal government can look at people who were paid off their homes, but now their homes need repairing, and they need to be able to use some of the funds. Our CDVG, I'm pleased to say that we are using it wisely, and I'm just asking that those matters that I've spoken of be looked at. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Not seeing anyone from the... Oh, sorry. Yes, go ahead.
Stephanie Correa. I'm just curious. I don't know that much about the Community Development Block Grant Program. How is it defined what is considered a blighted area in terms of... I'm trying to understand, since so much of Deerfield Beach has condominiums, which are separate privately-owned homes, how is it allocated, how this money gets spent in terms of low to moderate income? How is that determined? I don't understand exactly how it works. Who qualifies for it? In other words, can a condominium claim these funds? And is that actually what it was meant for, or is it more meant for communities? I'm just not clear on it. So any clarification would be helpful for me, and maybe for other people who don't know this Community Development Block Grant and how it works.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? And close it to the public. Ms. Picard, can you answer?
Sure. Just on clarification regarding individuals that do not have a mortgage. They are eligible for the program. It's individuals that do not have homeowner's insurance. The programs require us to have homeowner's, individuals to have homeowner's insurance as a liability. Contractors are going to the property, so they want to make sure that they have homeowner's insurance. So you can have a mortgage-free property, you just have to have homeowner's insurance, which a lot of individuals, because they don't have a mortgage, sometimes they do not have homeowner's insurance. So that's clarifying that. Regarding individuals who can get assistance with the program, low to moderate income individuals, there's a definition, which basically is, is that any individual that earns 80% or below of Broward County's median income would be considered low to moderate an individual. Therefore, if you need assistance to repair your home, or you want to purchase a house, it's on an individual basis. So once you meet the income criteria, you're eligible to apply. Granted, you are the property owner, and that you meet the income requirements, there's an application you can complete. Then, there's an area benefit project. This year, we don't have any area benefit projects identified, but we've done in the past. We've done sidewalks. We completed a project at Tignor Johnny McKeithen Park, where we did the park improvement for the playground. That is an area benefit project. That means that 50% or more of the residents in that census tract are considered low to moderate income individuals. Every year, that number changes. A new number comes out from the federal government of what is considered low to moderate. We use Broward County as the MSA for the metropolitan. We use the Fort Lauderdale area for... So we use Fort Lauderdale area for the median income. Deerfield Beach does not have its own specific area median income that we utilize for these programs. It's on a county level.
And as far as the condo, because this is primarily for single-family homeowners, it's diff-
No. As long as you're a property owner, so it could be a condo, a villa, a townhouse, as long as you own it. So it cannot be common areas. It has to be, so a condo would be anything inside the walls of the condo that you own. A single family, we can do a roof. A condo, we can't, because it's a common area, and it's not owned by that individual person. And there's no way for us to ensure that everyone in that condo meets the income criteria. So it's based on the single unit versus the complex.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
City manager?
I think that addressed all the questions, unless the commission has anything else for me?
No. I don't. Commission?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Preston, second by Commissioner Parnas. We have roll call, please.
Commissioner Houdak?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Drosky?
Yes.
Mayor Gantz?
Yes.
Item number four is an ordinance to the city commission of the city of Deerfield Beach, Florida, amending Chapter 2, Administration, Article 2, Boards, Committees, Commissions, Division 11, Youth Committee of the City Code of Ordinances, renaming the division to Youth Council, amending Section 2-181, established members' terms of office compensation. To amend terms of office and membership, amending Section 282-182, purpose to provide for powers and duties, amending Section 2-183, composition to amend membership requirements, amending Section 2-184, officers to provide for election of officers, providing for codification, severability, conflicts, and an effective date. And this is second reading.
Commission comments?
Yes. When I read this, I think that this is a very good program. But in the backup on page 2, on the powers and duties, it says to increase youth participation and involvement in local government. And D, it says to choose projects and initiative to work on the align with the city's mission and goals to inspire leadership and civic engagement in its youth. Those are two important criteria. And when I looked at that, I was thinking about what is the city's contribution? What do we do to actually increase youth participation and involvement in local government? So I'd like for my colleagues to look at amending this. I think as a part of this ordinance, there should be two criteria. It should include that a youth council member that is in good standing with the city and the youth council itself, the leadership, and if something happens to one of those participants, one of the members, that they have to leave due to graduation, relocation, medical issues, so forth, be brought before this commission for recognition and thanks of their service. In addition, I think each council member must attend two city commission meetings yearly, which will now allow us to basically define it a little bit more as the back, in the backup that I was presently referring to.
Anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Not seeing anyone come forward. I'm gonna close it. I really like the two meetings a year. I think that's a really good suggestion to put in there. The recognition and having them come forward should they leave. I don't know if you would put that in this ordinance. I mean, we could, but I think, but I think it should happen for sure. I agree with you on that. But I definitely, I really like the required to attend two meetings a year. Commissioner Parnas?
I agree with the two meetings a year, but automatic recognition, no. Suppose somebody had to be removed from the youth council because of conduct or whatever reason that they were removed, I don't think we should automatically thank them. I think it should be based on merit. I think it should be based on merit.
I did.
You said that when they leave, they should be recognized.
It was if they were in good standing.
If they were in good standing?
Yes.
Fine, okay. And I withdraw my objection.
Commissioner Preston, any further comment?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Maybe this can be addressed by directing the city manager and staff to recognize when someone is leaving, that the city manager and staff can take care of that, making sure that they are brought before the city commission.
We'd be happy to take care of that for you, Commissioner.
Yeah. Okay. Looking for a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
With the change, with the requirement of two meetings a year?
Yes, with the amended suggestions.
Okay.
Second.
Motion, Commissioner Preston, seconded by Commissioner Parnas. We have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Houdak?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Vice Mayor O'Driscue?
Yes.
Mayor Gantz?
Yes.
Okay, it's now the public comment portion of today's meeting. Persons addressing the commission shall state his or her name and address, may speak for three minutes unless extended for one additional minute by the mayor. All remarks made by the public at a commission meeting on an agenda item should be addressed to the commission as a body and limited to the subject matter before the commission at that particular time. If you have a discussion about a particular agenda item, the time to do that is during the public comment period for that agenda item. This is now the public comment period. If you wanted to discuss any issues before the commission that are not on the agenda And then, no comment shall be made related to the personal life or personal qualities of any person, and no language which offend persons of ordinary sensibilities shall be permitted.
Thank you. Mr. Cohen, there's four other people ahead of you that signed up, if that's all right.
I'm here to sign up. Okay.
Okay, and we'll have, you can speak right after they speak.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Attorney, and City Manager. My name is Lou Vensel, addresses twenty-four thirty-one Southwest Tenth Drive in Deerfield Beach. I'd like to bring attention to a recent action pertaining to the speed tables. They're being proposed and installed over on Southwest Twenty-eighth Avenue.
Thank you.
And also some other areas, I understand, in Waterford Homes. I'm the president of the HOA, and many people have emailed and called me about this, so I'm addressing this concern. My main point I intend to focus on is the procedure that the city has in place as to how residents are notified when initial complaints or proposals of the addition of speed table installations are brought to the attention of the city. From what I've been hearing thus far, is that when a group of neighbors feel a need to calm the traffic down, a knee-jerk reaction is to push for speed humps. Although a petition was circulated in the example of Waterford Homes, not all had been notified or were home during that process. I for one never received any notice. Therefore, many were not aware of the effort. So the city owes it to the residents to send an official letter for commons, and it should be extended to an area wide enough to reflect all of the area residents that might be using the road, the pathways regularly. The method of placing a note on a door jamb that has the potential of flying away, you know, just to a few select homeowners, is not the proper way to communicate and gather information from the residents in the targeted neighborhood. Again, I never received notices as well, except from a neighbor that emailed me his copy. I also believe the city should perform further research as to their pros and cons to traffic calming techniques. I'd like you to refer to what happened in Hillsborough County in the attachments I just passed out. You can also Google this information. And their costly removal of speed humps. So at the cost of a couple hundred thousand dollars, the county ended up removing them and writing a handbook called Residential Traffic Calming, which in short includes the following procedures. Initiation of complaints as it starts, and then, then traffic engineering analysis, classification, preliminary analysis, a public hearing, which I don't think ever happened in our community, recommendation of traffic calming measures, and designation of the affected area for the petition, and of course, the commencement of the petition itself. After all this is properly vetted and reviewed, and once all of the neighbors are properly notified, and then, if the majority of the neighbors wish to see recommended traffic calming method, then that's when the city should proceed. Anything less is falling short and places the city in legal jeopardy. Speaking of alternatives, one that the city should look at are the speed radar signs that we see in Coconut Creek, Margate, I mean, I have-
Yes.
Thank you. And even at the entrance to our city at Southwest Tenth Street, as everyone exits the Sawgrass. They do work. I know, it gets my attention, and I do slow down, and I see people slow down next to me, so I believe they work. And finally, why is our neighborhood set to thirty miles per hour with speed limit signs? I have one right in my front yard, and for twenty-seven years, I often wonder why we have a thirty mile per hour speed limit. I go thirty miles per hour, and people yell at me for going fast. So, you know, we should look at maybe lowering it to twenty, and maybe people, you know, being used to going ten miles over the limit, maybe it'll slow down a little bit. I just think it'd be more effective in slowing people down. And, you know, BSL also could maybe enforce the law a little bit more as well, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Denise Bogner?
Good evening, Denise Bogner, eleven fifty-seven Southwest Twenty-sixth Avenue. I've been one that's lived here in that neighborhood since nineteen eighty-five. I also would like to reflect on the traffic calming. This is the letter that supposedly was placed at doors of homes. On May seventeenth, the City of Deerfield Beach Environmental Service Streets Department will be installing speed tables on Southwest Twenty-Fifth Avenue, Southwest Fourteenth Court, and Southwest Twenty-eighth Avenue, the week of May twentieth to the twenty-fourth, twenty-nineteenth, for traffic calming improvements, weather permitting. Please submit any concerns or objections to John Melton with his cell phone number and email address within three business days of this notice. Failure to submit written objection within three business day window will be considered consent to proceed. I would now like to read a couple of notices that homeowners, these are property owners, responded. As residents of Waterford Homes residing on Southwest Twelfth Street, we strongly object to the plan to install additional speed tables around the community. Additionally, we were not notified by the city about this plan in advance and only found out about it a few days ago. This is being written on May twenty-second. We expect better communication from the city when changes that affect our community are planned. We believe the addition of speed tables along the major roadways in our community such as Southwest Twenty-eighth Avenue are unnecessary. If in fact there is excessive speeding occurring in the area, the Broward Sheriff's Office can be contacted to help resolve the issue. We feel that these speed tables rarely prevent these drivers who insist on breaking the law. However, a speeding ticket can be a deterrent. Other alternatives exist such as electronic radar signs. We ask that you reconsider this plan and look for an alternative solution. Another one. I'm writing to submit my objection to the traffic calming improvements scheduled to begin on my street without any notice to myself or my neighbors. A paper dated May seventeenth was placed on my door by a city employee at nine twenty-five AM today, and this is being written May twenty-first, for a project that supposedly started yesterday. Why were the residents of Waterford Homes not notified in advance? Why were we not invited to meet with the city to at least discuss the reasons for these attractions, and that all of us could make informed decisions whether we did or did not want speed bumps, humps in our neighborhood? This is not a good city policy. At this time, I do not want traffic calming on my street. I've attached the notice to the city manager, my commissioner, and the mayor's information. Next, Mr. Melton. I have been a Waterford homeowner since nineteen eighty-five. That is thirty-four years of enjoying this neighborhood without the need for speed bumps. And this is not, I'm not writing this one. Another one who's lived here as long as I have. I live on the east side of the neighborhood, and my daughter purchased a home on the west side of the neighborhood on Twenty-eighth Avenue without concerns about traffic. I did not receive notice of the city's plans for speed humps, and was just informed tonight by one of the neighbors. If you put speed humps as described, you will have to go over everyone in order to visit each other. I object to the way this whole situation has been handled, and I object to speed bumps. May I have another minute, please?
Yes.
I have been a resident of Waterford Homes since nineteen ninety-eight. During this time, it has been proposed to put speed tables in our development. This proposal had been defeated. This latest attempt is a shame, a sham. The Deerfield Beach Department of Environmental Services should not have proposed to put additional speed tables in our development without proper notice. Placing notices in door jams is outrageous. Has anyone given thought to how these new speed tables will affect fire rescue? They also will have to slow down to navigate our streets. Time lost, seconds count in an emergency. Have you ever ridden in a rescue vehicle? I have. It's not like riding in a personal vehicle. I live on Southwest Twelfth Street, and since Southwest Twenty-eighth Avenue is not a through street, I see no purpose to have these speed tables installed. What I'd like to see is, I can remember us trying to get them on a street a couple years back, and the city put in very detailed areas of how speed tables should be addressed. I would like a copy of that and to see if it's changed in the past few years. I'm gonna give this to David. If you could pass this on, whoever can give him that information, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have John Lambert.
My name's John Lambert. I live at twenty-five sixty-nine Southwest Fourteenth Court in the Waterford Homes neighborhood. And I believe Mr. Vensel and Ms. Bogner have stolen my thunder. Basically, the main thing that I really want to voice is my personal opinion, is I don't know where they intend to put these speed tables in our neighborhood, but I do not want one in front of my house. The last thing I want to hear at three o'clock in the morning is somebody squeaky brakes slamming over a speed table, where I can hear their ball joint squeak, and then their exhaust note when the car takes off in the middle of the night. It's a nuisance, it's horrible. The other thing that I really wanted to also bring up was, I don't know if anybody's driven down Lighthouse Drive lately in Lighthouse Point, but they have the radar signs all over the place there. I've driven through there at seven AM and seen police officers hiding behind trees with laser guns to measure speeds and actively pulling people over. Nobody speeds through Lighthouse Point. I'd like to see something like that brought to my neighborhood. And I think it's about it.
Thank you.
Elinda Kiss, sixteen twenty-seven Riverview Road, apartment three twelve, Deerfield Beach. Mayor, Commissioner, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, I really have just a question first, and that is, are we gonna have any CRA meetings this summer? Does anyone know?
I'll let you continue, and we'll answer you when you're done.
Okay. Because if we are, this is a CRA issue. If we're not, then I want to bring it up here. So are we-
We are.
We are, okay. Then I'll wait and bring up my, my issue at the CRA meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cohen?
Before I begin, I have a gift for you. These were not purposeful taxpayer money, they're private commissions. And to let you know-
You're gonna have to do all that from the mic, if you could just, if you don't mind. Thank you. Throw it upside down.
Thank you, David. Hang it on my mic, okay?
This is not a fashion statement.
You have to go to the mic, Mr. Cohen.
This is not a fashion statement. I, the dermatologist did a number on me, and it started hemorrhaging, and it's a very distracting thing to see. I'm also not doing a selfie. I'm using my birthday prism. I love this city.
You're naming addresses for the record.
Nine five three, Southeast Sixth Street.
Thank you.
That's in Deerfield Beach. Again, I'll say greetings, and express my love for this city. There's some recent events that are important to me, and I think perhaps to you, I hope. Memorial Day last week. As a citizen, I served in the United States Army. Did my duty. If asked, are you proud of that? I'd say I'm as proud of having served as I've been after a good day's work, knowing that I'd earned some rest, some reward. Serving as a citizen of this country really rewarded enough, knowing I contributed some very small way to maintaining the essence of what this country's all about. E pluribus uno, out of many, one. We say a pledge of allegiance to that thing. I'm not one for cliches or hackneyed phrases or euphemisms either, but this slogan makes my old chest swell with pride that I'm an American. Here, you work hard, every one of you, to make the city better in every way that you can. I submit to you, there's one area that begs your closer attention, and action. Official expression of the need to further harmony in the city of Deerfield Beach, tolerance. By example, you express this principle at every meeting, resolving differences and points of view collegially to move us forward. Tolerance, not a state of grace. Practice of true tolerance requires generating respect and acceptance of anyone else's right to differ. But practice of true tolerance cannot survive with acceptance or respect toward intolerance, as evidenced by attitudes that propelled the Holocaust, inspired cross burnings, synagogue and church shootings. My lineage, heredity of all Jews, is a vast treasure to be preserved, and it continues to be shared to this day. But it's also been made a great burden-
Would you like another minute? Yes, sir.
One that cannot be put down. I'm reading this a lot more slowly than I thought I would. Why is it some folks cannot find enough strength in their own creed without having a discredit beliefs of others? I don't get it. Is this as it should be in this land of e pluribus uno? Will it ever end? I mentioned my discomfort with euphemisms. One that troubles me, repeated use of the word minority. Is that a specific minority? Yours, 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 my, all of ours? Or is it just yours alone in practice? Here's where true tolerance should come into play. I'm guided by writings of great Sage Hill, the elder, wrote well over two thousand years ago. If I am not for myself, who will be for me? You've heard this before. But if I'm only for myself, what am I? And if not now, when?
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Anyone else from the public?
Bet Willett, twenty-six forty-six Emerald Way Circle. Thomas Jefferson wrote that there should be a wall of separation between church and state. In colonial times, many states had state churches, for example, the Anglican Church in Virginia, supported by public taxation. Baptists, the group Jefferson was writing to, were a minority, and heavily persecuted and put in jail for practicing their faith, and for unlawful meetings on Sundays. Baptists were forced to pay taxes to support the state church, and subjected to punishments such as prison, dunking, and public whipping. Although unlike the four Quakers that were hung in Boston, no Baptists appear to have been executed because of their faith. Baptists and other minority religions such as Methodists took the lead in demanding separation of church and state, which was not surprising, because they were the ones persecuted by the state-sponsored church members. Jefferson was opposed to government proclamation for days of fasting, prayer, or Thanksgiving because of this wall of separation. He refrained from prescribing even occasional performances of devotion. Many, if not most, Americans don't mind a day of prayer, or even prayer in schools. So why is it a problem for a president or a governor to proclaim a day of prayer? Because it causes a big crack in the wall of separation of church and state, and it opens a gateway to the loss of religious liberty, especially for non-Christian citizens. We no longer persecute Baptists and Methodists, but the country's population is majority Christian, and sometimes doesn't live up to the religious liberty championed by Jefferson. It's sometimes easy to forget that although the United States has a Christian majority, it is not a Christian nation. Some find it difficult to understand how religious liberty for all people means that Christianity is- Christianity is not favored by the government. To paraphrase an old saying, when you're accustomed to religious privilege, religious equality can seem like oppression. The point of this is to show that government-sponsored prayer is a slippery slope, and if held at all, it should be a totally non-sectarian and welcoming to all believers or non-believers alike. It must be a celebration of inclusion. Just as a magnet needs both a north and a south pole to be a whole magnet, our multicultural society cannot be my way versus your way, but rather my way and your way, religious and secular, traditional and revolutionary, outer-directed and inner-focused. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, I've come, oh, sorry, Gwen Clark Reed, 1430 Southwest 6th Way, Deerfield Beach. I have become very concerned about the length of the city commission meetings. I would like to know from the city attorney if there is a way the commission can look at a time certain and time certain ending on agenda items. I have sat through the last three meetings, which went into the next morning hours of the next day. Yes, I know that sometimes this may happen, but not three consecutive meetings. There were numbers, members of the public, who wanted to be heard on items, but for various reasons could not sit through the meeting to be heard. This is not fair to the residents who have the right to be heard on items of their interest. I don't want to think that this is intentionally being done. I also noticed that tempers got a little in the way after the lengthy meeting, as the length of the meeting grew. Please consider the residents when agendas are being made, as well as yourselves and the employees who must be here and are expected to be at work the next day to take care of our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mae Francis Fagan, 3500 Southwest Tertura Boulevard. There's a house in Alwood Homes that the residents have complained about, 230 South Northwest 5th Street. This house has a fence all the way up to the roof...
Did you say 3rd Street? Northwest 3rd Street?
5th Street.
5th Street.
Their address is 230. And the roof is all, I mean, the fence is all the way up to the roof. So they have some concerns because we don't know these people. They can snatch our children or whatever. Nobody ever knows what's going on behind that fence. So we have that concern. Also, on this weekend, I was very disappointed not to be informed by the city. There was a statewide basketball tournament here in the city of Deerfield. I attended Saturday and Sunday. We had, people came from all over the state of Florida for this event. And we, residents of Deerfield, were not notified and did not know anything about it. How I knew, because my cousin from over on the West Coast, they were here. And they notified me that this was going on. So I said what I would attend to support. But it was just a beautiful event, and I was just appalled that, I didn't see anybody else there from Deerfield.
We didn't know your cousin.
Excuse me?
We didn't know your cousin, unfortunately.
Well, I know. But you will know him because he's a linesman, so we better know him because we need, we without lights, we're going to need him.
Good.
But anyway, it was a beautiful event, and Fort Lauderdale received their rings. I tried to buy one. I told the little boy I'd give him a nickel for it. But anyway, it was a terrific event. And things that goes on like that. Our children need to be informed so they can attend this to see what the end could be, you know? It was a very beautiful event, and I really enjoyed it every day. It was a little expensive, but I enjoyed it. But please, let us be informed when these things are going on in the city of Deerfield because we have people from all over the state, and they spent lots of money in our hotels, you know, with these children. And I just want to be more informed. Please, thank you.
Thank you.
Amy Kay Tanner, 111 Southeast 5th Avenue, Deerfield Beach, Florida. Otis Tanner Waite, forgotten that. I would just like to let everyone know that after many years, specifically four years, a lot of work has gone into putting together a history of Deerfield Beach. And I wanted to let people know it is available at the Deerfield Beach Historical Society each Saturday from 10 until 2, or by calling the Historical Society, or a member of which will be happy to help you. It's a very interesting book. It will tell, you'll learn, Rachel Gavin told me, she learned things she'd never known in the first 12 pages. So there's lots, there's lots to know, and I think everybody would enjoy it. And I just wanted to let you all know, there's a new book out. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Sandra Jackson, 386 Southwest 35th Avenue, Deerfield Beach. I have two things I want to speak about. The first one, there was an incident happened on Sunday where someone had a retirement party in the Cove. I called Mr. Preston, also called Todd. There were signs up there saying that there was parking for two hours for free in the Cove, and after that you had to pay. They didn't know where to go to pay, but on Sunday you park for free anyway. From my understanding, from Monday to Saturday, you get two hours free parking, and then you pay, but there's no way to pay. So my question is, where do you go pay? If you're parking, I know Todd was going to go check it out for me. Thank you. I don't know if you got any information on it. Another thing, there was an incident happened with one of the park rangers. And I guess the park ranger said there was an ordinance or there was going to be one passed. I think they need to get their information right, saying there's going to be no fishing in John McKeever, and there's another park. And also the parking, wish the officers know these people go out there and park and sometimes sit out there or go fishing, and there's no incident. But the park ranger is the one made the comment telling the people they have to move. So you guys need to check into that too, because they should be telling people that they can't fish there or park there when they don't know there's no ordinance in place. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Glenn Sullivan, 2377 Deer Creek Trail, Deerfield Beach. Good evening. What I'm just passing out is my, I like to call it the scorecard. It's basically the, a record of the cuts that I recommended to the city at the, for the 2019 budget meeting. And it is on track to nearly double the amount that I had recommended. So I hope that the city and city staff will take that into account when they're putting the budget together. Also, I think over three weeks ago, I forwarded my analysis of the revenue collected for the past two years, as well as this current year, and how revenue was significantly overestimated. I just, here again, I know that there was a little bit of discussion. The CFO mentioned that some of it was cash carryover and encumbrance. I think he mentioned $8 million. Well, last year, there was a $24 million overestimate, and that leaves 16 million, assuming that you even put encumbrances in a budget, in a fiscal year budget, which I don't believe they do. So I really hope that my questions would be answered. They were not. But at least I hope you consider it in the, again, in the budget meetings. I know at the last meeting, there was, the city manager, or interim city manager, mentioned that he had a copy of the external audit plan in draft form. I was just wondering, will the residents have the opportunity to see that before it's sent out for bid? And what's the timeline for that? And then another item, a suggestion for the commission to consider. Based on the recent past, I believe the city should consider hiring an internal auditor who would report directly to the commission. The initial responsibility could be to oversee any corrective actions taken in regard to the audit that will be performed, and then thereafter develop a yearly audit plan for areas to be reviewed and report results to the commission. I believe reporting directly to the commission will ensure the reviews and findings are independent. I think regardless of whether we have problems today, it's a good practice to have somebody auditing the operations of the city and reporting directly to the commission instead of going through the city staff. That will ensure independence for you to make decisions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
My name is Joe Hines, 559 Northwest 47th Terrace. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners? It's been 60 days since Burgess Hansen resigned as the city manager. The last commission meeting, the remarks from the Commissioners during the meeting, it seemed like it was a very light attitude toward having a forensic audit and also having a criminal investigation. I'm not really sure if the city's had done anything about a criminal investigation. I'd ask you Commissioners, if you heard anything about it? And if you haven't heard anything about it, if you're curious about it, why haven't you heard about it? The, if the city doesn't have a good investigation on this, I think it's going to bring shame to the city. And I'm going to give you a few reasons why. You know, the city has admitted that they don't follow policies and procedures that have been sanctioned or written letters for numerous years. I have copies going back to 2012 where the city received letters from the state auditor. And some of those, those letters were ignored, basically. But the city's admitted to spending $400,000 unnecessarily on insurance. The city has admitted that they didn't even know anything about the manager getting over You know, Mr. Sullivan brought up something, and I started looking at it. And you realize the city has overinflated your budgets each year, over the past five years to the $298 million? It's almost $20 million a year. It's overinflated. If you add it up, you get it from the net summary, when you compare the net summary statement with your budget statement. During that same period of time, the city had $16 million in surplus revenue. But also during that same time, the city sent $43 million over to an investment account. And that's, that's $26 million in addition to the $16 million surplus that the $16 million surplus was sent. But it's $43 million, which the city now holds $63 million in investment account. You know, it just, it boggles my mind, the bookkeeping methods with this city, and that's why I say the city needs a forensic audit. There's no telling what all is going on out there. There's so many, there's so many issues going that it just, it just, you know, boggles my mind as to how the city keeps its books. How do you overestimate your budgets by $100 million? I mean, what's the purpose of it? There's a reason behind that. I don't know what it is, but there's a reason behind it. You can give wages, you can say, "We're making money, we give more wages," whatever it is. There's something going on, and I don't like it. And I don't think the folks like it either. It's $100 million bucks. And I wish somebody could come up and shed some light on that subject. I'd love to hear what you have to say about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
Patrick Carter, 816 Southeast 4th Court, Deerfield Beach, Florida. Since April or May of 2016, myself and neighbors have had to live next to 853 Southeast 4th Court, a facility that's being run as a sober house. From 6:30 AM in the morning to any time at night after 9:00 PM, we live next to a frat house, or even worse. The reason I say those times is because at 6:30 in the morning, they come outside and they sit around until 9:00 o'clock in the morning until they start going to their meetings. It starts at one person, two, four, five, 10, 20, 30 individuals in a parking lot in front of the building until they leave. At around 3:00 to 4:00, they return. Imagine a constant college frat house in your backyard, every day, and I mean every day, especially Saturday morning or Sunday morning. Myself and several individuals on this side of the complex have installed impact windows with the hope that that would abate the noise. It doesn't. It starts with yelling, screaming, "Wake up, come downstairs, whatever you want in the morning," every morning. They honk the horns literally in the parking lot for 15 to 20 minutes every day for them to come down to the vans for the meetings, every day. I've called the police, I've had conversations with them. I was even sent a special priority officer to my home. Last Saturday is an example. I had a resident on my back wall crawling along a seven-foot wall, looking where they kicked a soccer ball. I called the police and asked them, like most of you would ask, what would you do if you have, the person would have dropped in your backyard? Should I protect my family? I've even spoken to or emailed a majority of the board members here. We, as a group, had a special meeting with an attorney representing the city. Nothing, I mean, nothing has changed, and it's even gotten worse. I came, I came here again with, currently, before I came here again with impact windows, the constant parting is going on, yelling, music, sometimes fighting. They have no place to go except for outside in front of the building. Commissioner Parnas said at a meeting I came to last year, when the board voted here for an enforcement officer, to have a new enforcement officer. His words, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, "Why do we need more code enforcement when we don't enforce the code we have?" The building currently has over $500,000 worth of fines, but yet we still live in a daily hell for three years. Nothing has changed. I'm asking for help to enjoy my home like you all do, daily without constant noise, trash, destruction of property, and I can't, I can't go on, and this shouldn't go on, and it shouldn't go on for as long as it has. I get the need. I understand it. But I definitely don't need to be a participant in their recovery on a day-to-day, hour-to-hour basis. On a positive note, I'd like to say, on the east side of town, the people that work to clean up our city, after events that they have on the east side, actually do a very good job, and I want to say on a positive note. But it is going on for too long.
Anyone else?
Good evening, Commissioners. Good evening, Mayor. My name is Dan Hers, and I live at 330 Southeast 19th Avenue. I know the commission is still mulling over what kind of audit to perform and if a criminal investigation by the FDLE or BSO's Public Corruption Unit will ever occur. In the meantime, I wanted to comment on some of the Commissioner comments from last meeting. Commissioner Drosky said there were managerial missteps committed, not financial missteps. I would like to remind Commissioner Drosky about the 38 times Barwas Performance was allowed to use city athletic fields in February and March without paying a dime for the usage. The previous not-for-profit soccer program that was thrown out when Barwas came along, the runners of Deerfield Beach paid $100 every time they used the city's athletic fields. So that means the city is out $3,800 of revenue that Barwas Performance should have paid. Has anyone from the city sent a bill yet for that $3,800 to Barwas Performance? Maybe this city should assign the Economic Development Council to the task of trying to collect this money from Barwas Performance. And please, don't make Barwas Performance out to be an innocent bystander in this scandal that did no wrong. It has recently come to light that Barwas Performance allowed certain high-ranking city employees, including Cara Petty, to use their workout facilities free of charge. Only a criminal investigation will uncover any more improprieties. Commissioner Parnas said last meeting that how the city manager is used is up to the commission. He went on to say, "We haven't had that much information from the city manager the last few years, and we need more detail." I don't know if Commissioner Parnas and the other two of you who have been here a while have been listening to the citizens, but we time and again have pointed out Burgess Hansen's actions that have not been in the best interests of the citizens. Every time it fell on deaf ears, and instead Burgess was defended and praised. A system of checks and balances requires the three of you to be more involved with what the city manager is up to. On another topic, I will again ask the question with regard to Cassie Warren, who at the time of the Barwas Performance scandal was acting parks and rec director, of why she is still employed by the city. Her deep involvement with Barwas Performance has been documented by the hundreds of emails that she either initiated or was copied on relating to Barwas. Here are a few of them. On February 8... On February 8th, Cassie receives an email from Barwas Performance employee Donnie Venker. It reads as follows. "Good morning, Cassie. Just following up on our conversation from last night. If you could get together with Kenton Smith as soon as possible to review the schedule of availabilities of Deerfield Beach's athletic facilities, both fields and gymnasium space." Then almost two months later, after Mayor Ganson's... May I have the one more minute, please?
Yes.
After Mayor Ganson sends an email early on April 1st requesting all sorts of documentation on Barwas Performance's usage of city fields that should have already been in place since February, we get the following email from Cassie to Cara Petty on the morning of April 2nd. "In regards to proof of payment for Barwas, they are using their nonprofit status, so no payment has been collected. In regards to the background checks for Barwas, nothing has been received back, even though we have asked and provided them the background affidavit. In addition, they have not submitted back the signed waiver of the field use permits." So why did one employee, Cara Petty, lose her job over this scandal while Cassie Warren is allowed to remain? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
Good evening. John Slattery, 1455 Southeast 5th Place. This will be my third consecutive meeting where I've got up and I've asked that we do a forensic audit and a criminal investigation of what went on with the previous city manager in regard to the payments that were misappropriated and the other things that are starting to come to light. We need to clear the air of this, and when we have a new city manager come in, and I'm saying this again for the third time, he needs to be able to start with a clean slate. You can't have a bunch of skeletons in the closet for this person to take over. It's just not fair. It's not fair to the citizens if this stuff continues to be buried and hidden. Another question I have, and I would love it if somebody somewhere in this building actually has the answer for this. We have a tremendous amount of construction projects going on right now in this city that this city is encumbering the citizens with, debt. I would like to know if somebody has a top-line number of what this debt is now adding up to in regards to the active aging and all the other projects that are going on. And now I hear we possibly have a compressed natural gas depot to be built. Is this in fact true for another $10 million of debt that the city's looking to incur? I'd really like it if somebody can come up with what the top-line number is between bonds and debt that you are subjecting these citizens and taxpayers at Deerfield Beach to. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? Going to close it to the public? I'm sure staff will get with the members from Waterford Homes to discuss the traffic calming, but the traffic calming policy, which had been halted for many years, have been put in place. I will tell you this about those signs, let me tell you how effective they are. Last night, we had, they were destroyed on Hillsborough Boulevard as you come over the turnpike. Cars smashed right into it, abandoned the car and walked away and completely destroyed it. They're not as effective as you might think, though I do think that certainly slowed that car down. But I think there are other methods, and certainly we can look at it. And as far as putting traffic calming in front of someone's homes, that's one of the things we've always said as a city, we need to make sure that once engineering has determined where they would need to go, that we get the buy-in from the residents who would be affected by having it in front of their house. Many people want them, but as soon as they find out it's going in front of their house, they suddenly change their mind. It becomes a NIMBY situation. So I have no doubt that we will be, that there will be discussions, and we can meet with all of you to talk about that. There will be a CRA meeting on the 11th, which will be our next CRA meeting that we're going to have. I believe... City Attorney, did you want to address that one issue?
Yes, as to Mr. Carter's comments, I've spoken with Mr. Carter. I feel for you certainly of your situation with respect to the sober home, and I've discussed some of the limitations the city has in terms of regulating them. But the city has moved forward and is doing everything it possibly can within the legal bounds of the law. And I have an update for you that I could discuss privately. The city is currently in active litigation with the, both the owner and the tenant of that home, so I'd prefer not to discuss the details of that on the record. And I'll follow up with Mr. Carter separately. And please, Mr. Carter, if you can give me a call tomorrow, I can give you a further update, but just know that the city is doing what it can within the legal bounds of the law to address your situation. Granted, it's not happening as fast as you'd like, and I understand and can respect and appreciate that, but we are moving forward.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Next item? We'll get with you afterwards, ma'am. As far as the length of the meetings, is that what your question was? No, I will say this, I don't support a time certain, okay? Just like everybody got up here tonight, we're in the public's time to hear, to speak, everybody got their time granted, and they got extra time to speak. Our agenda's sometimes, the debate that goes on, the amount of people, we can't turn them away just because you didn't get to your item. I don't agree in a time certain. City of Fort Lauderdale has gone on till 4:00 a.m. in the morning. Ma'am, you can't speak from the audience, Ms. Clark Reed. I'll be happy to talk to you afterwards, my opinion on it, but I disagree with it. So unless anybody else wants to bring it up, I have no intention of bringing it up. Next item?
The next item is item number five, Resolution of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, reappointing Patrick Morris as a regular member to the Community Appearance Board, providing for service without compensation and providing for an effective date.
Not seeing anyone from the public here to comment on this item. Okay. Close it to the public.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Parnas, second from Commissioner Hudeck. We have all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed? Passees unanimously.
Item number six is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, appointing Judy Hart as an alternate member to the Cultural Committee, providing for service without compensation, providing for an effective date.
Commission comments? Before we do that, anyone from the public here to comment on item number six? I'm going to close it to the public. Commissioner, Vice Mayor Drosky? This is yours, you sponsored this?
Thank you.
Commissioner Parnas, you made the motion?
Second.
We have a second from Vice Mayor Drosky. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed? Passees unanimously.
Item number seven is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, approving the ranking and recommendation of the Evaluation Committee to qualify and allow the three firms responsive to request for qualifications, number 2018-19/06, for design-build services, Seawood Builders LLC, DePompeo Construction Corporation, and West Construction, Inc., to participate in the request for proposals phase of the design-build contractor selection process for the Center for Active Aging Redevelopment project, providing for an effective date.
Commission, do you have any comments? We have people signed up for this.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Yvonne Patterson, I'm 425 Northwest 4th Terrace, apartment 204, Deerfield Beach. I'm here to congratulate and thank the people of the focal point, because I'm standing here, because they did so much to make me be here and can look at each other and talk. I was in an accident. They didn't expect me to live. If I live, I'll be a vegetable. But you know, my God, I was there. And I want to thank these people. They were tremendously great to me. I couldn't walk, I couldn't talk, I didn't know my son. It was a traumatic, brain-injured situation. I was in a coma for four and a half months. They did not think I would be here. And God, I'm here, and I'm walking and enjoying life. They worked a lot with me. They showed me so much things, oh, to talk. I couldn't talk, I couldn't, I didn't know what is mother, whatever. I learned all those things through them. I learned to walk, to talk, to communicate with people, and I'm still with them. My accident was '96, and believe you me, the focal point was a 100% blessing. They need as much help out that they can get to build, because what happened to me could happen to anybody. I just moved down from Connecticut. It just started working. Accident happened. But you know something? I thank the heaven to Father, and I thank the focal point people, and I thank many brothers and sisters who were there to help me. I'm still facing a lot of things, but I'm getting help, and I can turn to them. If I have a problem, I can call, and someone is there to help me. And I really appreciate, because we don't know what may happen to us. I come down here to have a good time from Connecticut. I didn't have a good time, I had a big accident. But you know something? The Father wants me here for a reason. I cherish the moment, and I really thank the focal point. They're an asset to my life, and many brothers and sisters out there. And I want to thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Donna Powell. I live at 220 Markham K. in Central Village, Deerfield Beach. I started coming to the Center for Active Aging about eight years ago. I heard about an exercise program they had there, so I started going to that. And I was 80 years old then, and I had a car, and I was a very busy person. My friend Nancy used to say to me, "Donna, you ought to come to the multipurpose room." And I said, "I will when I get older." Well, when I gave up my car three years ago, I got older. I started getting picked up at the center by the center bus, and I realized how much I was missing. There's so much going on, you have to pick and choose what you do. You can't get involved in everything. I still go to Julie's Enhanced Fitness Exercise three days a week. I do chair yoga on Tuesday morning and tai chi on Thursday morning. On Tuesday afternoon, I go to the knitting class. We have bingo on Monday and Thursday morning, and sometimes I skip that and go to Kelly's group where we discuss different topics. There are meals on wheels for lunch, or you can opt to bring your own. Every Wednesday, there are trips to the local restaurants. Only $2 transportation fee to buy your own lunch. There are art classes, computer classes, libraries, sculpturing classes, and a coffee shop where you can sit outside and just talk to enjoy the garden. The staff is amazing. They are there whenever you need them, helping with blood pressure checks and minor injuries. When they say "home away from home," it is definitely that. When seniors like myself do not drive, the buses are so crucial to us. They keep us from staying home and doing nothing. And the bus drivers are so accommodating, they have a lot of patience with us. Our drivers are the best, and even if you don't want to get involved in any of the activities, you can just stay in the multipurpose room and play games and socialize. My life is so full because of Center for Active Aging, and I thank everyone that makes this possible.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members. My name is Gloria Ochigroso, 520...
You can speak right into the mic.
520 Southwest Natura Avenue, Deerfield Beach. I think Donna just gave you the whole rundown, and I've conveyed very much to it. I did lose my husband a few years ago. I was in a very down mood. Neighbors came over and tried to get me out, and one of them suggested, "Why don't you go down to the focal point?" Which I did, and I think it was about the best thing that happened to me. Got involved with everything that Donna said. We have so much going on, and it just took me out of the bad mood into a good mood. Joined that Enhanced Fitness. We have Julie, our instructor, who is terrific. Everybody there is terrific, and they're all very helpful. The buses are very good, although I don't need it, I can still drive. And like she said, there's so much doing. The meal's there for the older people, and you just walk in and go around saying hello to everybody, and it's just like one big family. That's it, guys. That's about all I can say.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Yeah, no, not necessarily. That's not my reason for being up here. Gwen Clark Reed, 1430 Southwest 6way, Deerfield. I noticed that the intergenerational daycare center is not mentioned as a part of this, and I want to know, would there be another RFP out for that part of the building? Just what's going to happen with that?
Glenn Sullivan, 2377 Deer Creek Trail, Deerfield Beach, Florida. This is out of the procurement manual, or out of the... The primary purpose of this procurement code is to encourage greater competition, ensuring purchasing integrity, and maximize the acquisition value of public funds while allowing for an efficient, flexible procurement operation. I went over this quite in-depth, and I got all the backup information via PRR, which should have been loaded for all citizens, by the way. I noticed that there were three types of invites for respondents to reply. So the first one, I'll assume auto refers to an automatic notification to those in the e-procurement system. The second type of notification is shown as manual. So I question, how and why does the city send invites manually? And the last, and I believe to be self-explanatory, is the external invite. When does the city use external invites per procedure? And why were only four external invites sent, none of whom responded to the project? Who determines who to send external invites to? Why didn't local companies such as Butters Construction and RDC Design Build in Pompano Beach not receive external invites? The process should not allow selective invitations, as at a minimum, perception is not good. This is an important project, the first major construction by the city in some time, and we're sending external invites selectively. What is going on? Why would you pick and choose to send external invites out to select companies at all? I mean, does the procurement code allow that? And does it allow somebody? The commission didn't make that call, somebody else did. So who has the power to externally invite select companies? And why do they have that power? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sandra Jackson, 386 Southwest 35th Avenue. I agree with Glenn Sullivan. I'm a little concerned also myself. I have nothing against the Northeast Focal Point. I think we need to also do something else with that building, because that is a large area where we only have a certain amount of people that's coming there. I didn't know they had all that stuff there. I'm a senior citizen myself. But is there any way we can go back and invite some of these other companies that was not a part of having an invitation or invite to be a part of this bidding process? Is there any way we can go back before you guys make a decision with just these three companies? Is there any way we can go back before you guys make a decision with just these three companies? Because I don't think it's fair if the other people you didn't reach out, and my understanding, some of them have the qualification that is required to bid on this bid. So I think you guys need to go back and reconsider this bid before you guys decide on it.
Anyone else from the public?
Hello again, John Slattery, fourteen fifty-five Southeast Fifth Place. When I got up before and asked about the expenditures of the city with all the projects we have going on, obviously that was not answered, that was ignored. I have nothing against Northeast Focal Point. It serves a great purpose for our community. What I do have a problem with is that, let's say, for instance, me as a homeowner. I mean, it's, unless I won the lottery, I've got a whole lot of money in the bank. I'm not just going to go out and I'm going to do my roof, I'm going to do my garage, I'm going to remodel, I'm going to add another floor. I'm not going to do all this at one time, right? You do things in phases because you budget things, because you're responsible people, right? Our city is not being responsible right now. And that was my point, and I'm sure that'll get ignored again. But let me, let me phrase it this way. If we had a city council meeting like this, and you expect like a hundred, maybe a hundred and thirty-seven people to show up, and if three showed up, everybody'd be like, what happened? What did we do wrong? Did we not advertise this meeting tonight? Why didn't anybody show up? If you had a dinner party scheduled at your house and you invited a hundred and thirty-seven people, and you found out only seven people received the invitations and looked at them, and only three people showed up at your house for dinner? You'd be like, what did we do wrong? But you know what? You guys aren't realizing or wanting to recognize that either something's wrong or something's intentional. And it looks really, really suspicious. And I'm willing to bet fifty bucks, or a hundred bucks, or maybe five hundred bucks, that one of the bidders, one of those three, is going to win this. And is probably the one that contributed to most of the election campaigns of the people sitting on this dais. It's really suspicious. And we're not dumb out here. We know what's going on. Straighten this out, put this back out to bid, make it a competitive bid, maybe save us a few million dollars as taxpayers and do this the right way. And do a fair bid. I mean, did you guys bid this on, you know, RFP Depot? Did you put it through Dodge Reports? Did you put it through BidNet? Did you put it through the regular channels that these things usually go through? And there's a few others that are just for construction for big municipal projects that I did not see in the documentation that you guys had for tonight's meeting. This was not done the right way. Otherwise, you would have had more than seven people open it and more than three people respond. People, businesses, contractors, you know, semantics here. This didn't work out the way it should have for the taxpayers of the city. Please make it right.
Thank you.
Mae Francis, Mae Francis, thirty-five hundred Southwest Natura Boulevard. I'm very familiar with the focal point. I remember when it was built. Nancy Reichtemack was the first director there before Donna. And I find it so appalling, like he said, that we're not, our community is not benefiting from this focal point. When you go to Pompano East, Patlock, that's where our seniors are, enjoying Pompano. So why we don't feel comfortable, our people do not feel comfortable at the focal point. I asked you that at Mr. Preston's first community meeting. I asked you about that, Mr. Dis, whatever your name is. Anyway, not being disrespectful because I don't know really what your name is. But anyway, our people are really not enjoying, they're going all the way to Pompano. Our seniors. They go there and they're enjoying, they come back with all these programs and things, and they're going to the African Safari, they're going to Miami Seacour. What are our people doing? Sitting home dying. Because they don't feel welcome at the focal point. And that's a sad thing. Now, she says she goes there and, you know, and that's fine. But for that place, and you're going to spend millions and millions of dollars for nineteen people? From my understanding, that's all we got. Now, when Nancy Reichtemack was there, it was overflowing. But it has not been nothing since then. But we need to address that. Because we, the taxpayers, paying for this. You're not, they're not, you're not giving us anything. But we ask for we get the fair share also. We have churches. Nobody comes to our churches and tell us what's going on at the focal point. Nothing. And so it's a sad occasion when our people have to go all the way to Pompano to enjoy the other people, and we have things here. And we're not enjoying what we say we are providing for our seniors. It's a shame and a disgrace.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Joe Heinz, five fifty-nine Northwest Forty-seventh Terrace. Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioner. Some of the backup here. You know, on the list of contractors, I was really surprised when I didn't see Butter's listed. I mean, I think everybody in Deerfield knows Butter's Construction. There was a number, another contractor listed here, which I was really surprised with. And that's Stiles Construction. You know, Stiles Construction could do this job in her sleep. And obviously, they didn't quote it. You know, there's a couple others here. JWR and Kaufman Lim, they've been around for a long time, no quotes. It just seems kind of really amazing to me. The, but here's another thing. You rate these contractors. Seawood's rated number one, Pompeo is number two, and West Construction is number three. I was just wondering, if West was low bid by a dollar, would they get the job because they have the lower rating than the other two? I mean, I mean, if you're going to bid a job, don't you go by low price? So I'm just wondering what this ranking was all about, and if that has any effect on the actual outcome of the job and the bid price. Another thing that I found really interesting was, if you look back in the package there, they ask the three vendors here, contractors here, if you're going to use any subcontractors. It's one of the questions. And of all things, Seawood says, Yusuf, will you be using any subcontractors? Say no. They got no down there, which means I guess they're going to do the job by themselves, which, you know, they can't do that. The other two did list some subcontractors. So I thought that was kind of a strange, strange answer. But, you know, I'd put this thing up to bid again. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? I'm going to close it to the public. City manager, you want to address some of those?
Sheriff, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Commission. In terms of the system, the various categories of invitations, auto, manual, and external, what you do when you put out one of these bids is you attach it to a specific commodity code. And on the other side of the system, you have the vendor portable, vendor portal, where vendors choose which commodity codes they want to learn about invitation opportunities and/or the products or services for which they provide. So let's just use construction as an example. And there's many, many different categories of construction. But for simplicity purposes, we'll just call it construction. The vendors who, who were auto-invited were under the commodity code construction. We chose the commodity code construction, they were automatically invited. Okay? Then we go and we look at other similar commodity codes, and we choose them manually in the system, not vendors, commodity codes. And so they become manual invitations. externals can come in many different ways. We go ahead and staff sits down with the using department and says, hey, this is the invite list. Are we missing anybody? There are companies out there that may want to, that we may want to invite to this bid opportunity that are not current vendors that you may be aware of. They could be included as external invites. Sometimes we get vendors who will, you know, cold-call us. And maybe they haven't registered yet, but they've asked, hey, can you just include me in this, this competition? So the external invites can come in many different ways. We can, we can, we can put them in there for many different reasons. But they're just not registered vendors with the, with the city at the end of the day. So in terms of who has this selective invitation power, there is no such power. It's just a courtesy to those vendors who we think we'd like to additionally include or who have asked to be included. In terms of some of the external, there are some external companies out there, like your Dodge Reports, your RFP Depots, and that sort of thing. Do we advertise through there? The answer is, is no. We have our bidding system that we use. And many times, as in the case with this one, you'll see that some of them are actually on the bidder's list to receive this information. So they've actually already received that information in some cases, and in this one. The rating system. So this, this was a request for qualifications. And typically, you know, our hopes is, is that we do get a good pool of contractors who will submit statements of qualification to us. And I think it just goes to show what the market is out there right now, which is a very, very strong construction market. And what I will tell you is that, generally speaking, when business is slow, government bid responses increase. When the private sector is booming, the public sector bids decrease. And so I think that's really what's going on here at the end of the day. The question out there was, you know, can we redo this? But by all means, the city commission could redo this. One of two things could happen. You could get more bids. Because, just because a bidder who we invited did not provide a response today doesn't mean that they might not have the time to do it tomorrow. Conversely, you may lose participation. Because we only received three this time. And somebody could very easily say, I already submitted a bid, I don't have time to do this again. You wasted my time the first time, I'm not going to submit a second bid. And you may have a decreased pool of qualified firms at this point. So you have to consider that. The rating system really is irrelevant in this case because we typically will have, you know, more than three. We'd like to have more than three submit a bid. So let's just say that we received ten bids. Well, we'd rank them, one to ten, and then we'd shortlist down to three so that they would have the, the opportunity for that request for proposal that will go out subsequent to this, should the city commission decide to, to move forward. And so really, with this, in this case, since we only had three, the ranking is irrelevant. And quite frankly, the ranking is irrelevant moving forward into the RFP process because all this, all this does is allows these three firms to submit a proposal for that request for proposals process. Those were all the notes that I took, Mayor. So I'm not sure if that answered all the questions. If the commission has any other questions on me or for me, I'd be happy to answer them. But I think I, I think I got them all.
Uh, just to touch base again on the, on the, on the external invite. Can you, can you clarify that again?
Yes, so, so when we have, these are, these are potential respondents to a competitive solicitation who are not in our bidding system. But for whether or not it's, it's the buyer through his market research, whether or not it's the end user who is the project manager, who knows of some firms that may do this type of work, they get, that, they will get added manually with an email address.
Okay. City Attorney, if you could clarify some, something that we talked about before the meeting.
Sure. Now, as to that issue with the external invite, I'm not aware of anything that would prevent city staff from, from doing what was explained today. And I just want to point out, what they're really doing is they're forwarding the notice that's already published in the paper, which is legally required to be published in the paper to these individuals. My understanding is the same thing happens through that automatic and manual process that was also explained to you before. So, you know, there's not necessarily like a substantive added benefit other than, well, hey, if you didn't see it in, in some other forum, they're now saying, heads up, you can submit for this. And then, I think I just touched on it, that, yeah, the statutes in terms of these types of procurements, you know, the minimum requirement is basically to put out public notice, advise people where they can participate, how they can participate, where they submit their proposal, and follow the process thereafter. And that process, from my understanding in this case, was followed. Whether you could do something better, or one way or a different way, you know, I'll, I'll leave that up to the, to the policymakers and the folks to comment on that. But in, in terms of meeting legal requirements by putting the public notice out, I believe that was achieved in the paper. And then I was going to touch on the rankings, but I think your, your city manager did a good job explaining the significance or potentially lack thereof with respect to phase two, the RFP phase when the city receives pricing, and that the rankings from the initial RFQ phase really have no significance there. Did I touch on all the?
I think so.
Okay.
Commissioner Parnas and then Commissioner Houdak?
Sir, I know you wanted to bet money. I should really take the bet. I don't know any of these construction firms. Nor have I taken any money from them in my campaign. It's a matter of public record who I did take money from. So your accusation is not only incorrect, it's insulting. And there's no need to insult this commission or me personally. I don't know these companies, and I didn't take any money from them. And to accuse me of doing so is wrong and incorrect. You said, I'll bet the members of this commission took contributions from them, and I did not.
Thank you. Commissioner, excuse me. No, no comments from outside, please. Commissioner Houdak?
I guess I, I do have a question. We did send out a hundred and twenty-seven or a hundred and thirty-seven requests, and we only received back three. Do we, have we been able to do any research as to, as to why some of the, the companies that have, you know, are in our system have decided not to bid for this? I don't know if we're allowed to or not, because that, that has some validity. You know, we, we sent out all of these invites and we only received three back. So I was just curious if we did any follow-up, even if we're allowed to.
Commissioner, to answer your question, we absolutely can call and follow up. And we do in, in certain instances, and in this one, we did as well. We followed up with Butter's Construction, RDC. We followed up with Kaufman Lim, Stiles. Those are the four that were mentioned. I know that we reached out to them because they're big players in, in design build. But we were told that although they're, they're interested, they just, their workload and current commitments would not allow them to bid on this project. And they typically, like in Butter's Construction case, they, they rarely do government work. And the others, just like I said, their workload is pretty immense right now.
Thank you. Commissioner Preston?
I recently had a conversation with staff regarding this situation. And I was surprised that we ended up with only three. So we're in a situation where we say that the three that we ended up with, we allow them to go ahead, or we can redo the process. And in doing so, maybe we will receive more than three this time. And maybe it was not communicated as well as it could have been. So I don't know that it would be a bad thing to look at this process being looked at again so that we give more people, more companies an opportunity to participate in, in this process.
So just a couple things. It's interesting that people talk out both sides of their mouth. They either, they like the focal point, but yet they do this little side angle shot at the focal point. Why are we spending this money on it? And everybody talks about the money that we're spending in the city of Deerfield Beach. Well, if you don't think this citizen, you know, just because you don't use it, doesn't mean there's not a need. A lot of the times, especially with the Northeast Focal Point, that, if you go to that facility and you see how antiquated that is, I'm telling you right now, that is a major need for this city. And if you don't think investing in, in, in the elderly population, which all of us are going to very soon be in that category, is, is not a worthwhile investment. Don't interrupt, sir, and don't speak out from the crowd. Everybody likes to think it's, it's about them. That's their mind. I'm talking to generalization, because you'll hear it from all different people. You say, well, we like the Northeast Focal Point, but yet we're going to take a shot at it. Well, you know what? The truth of the matter is, if you build that thing and put it together the way it's supposed to be right now, you're going to have a lot of people, there is a need in this city. Okay? There is a need. And for those of you who haven't attended some of the meetings, there was a meeting that... was a meeting that we had when we publicly talked about this. It was packed with people that just take the woodworking class alone. Everybody seems to harp on this one small number, but the amount of people that go through those doors far exceed what those numbers that you're talking about. And there is a need. And I'm sorry if it doesn't line up with what you want. When you bought your house, I'm sure you took a mortgage out on it. I'm sure you paid interest on it. Do you expect the city of Deerfield Beach to save up money and only have a giant amount pile of money saved up over however many years? All the time during those years, you're asking us to reduce taxes, but we save up this large sum of money, and when we have it all, then we pay flat out cash for a brand new construction project like that? It's not the way it works. Yeah, we went out for a small municipal bond to tackle three things. If you've been to the Tigner Center, you know damn well, that's needed to be improved. When you sit there and there's no air conditioning in a, in a, in a government building like that after however many decades, there's a need. You don't like the finances of it, fine. You can argue it all day long. I can tell you, a lot of the times, and especially when it goes to some of these numbers have been brought up before, wildly inaccurate. Okay? It's interesting that people are bringing up Butters. I called Malcolm Butters today. By the way, a campaign contributor of mine. It would have been really awkward if I had called him and said, please come here and bid on it, since he contributed to my campaign. But they selectively pick who they want to target and their complaints because they don't happen to like somebody. But they talk about Malcolm Butters. I talked to Malcolm. He's in Italy right now. Otherwise, he probably would have been here if I'd asked him to. Malcolm said, we weren't quite aware of it, but we did have somebody call our company. And they asked a very pointed question that was in a silo. It wasn't about the overall, would you be interested in a project like that? Well, they're not going to say no to the city of Deerfield. Yeah, I guess we would be interested. The truth of the matter is, Butters Construction's, as they told me, this isn't in their wheelhouse. They received the notifications. They see the publications. We went above and beyond on that. We put it out there. I don't know why we only got three. I don't know why you would suggest that communication wasn't well done on that. I'm a little stumped on that because we went above and beyond our normal sending it out. Anybody can follow this. Private citizens can sign up to be a vendor and follow this process. If you're in this business, you're out there looking for stuff. Styles did our, our peer. When we redid the peer. Thank you. I, I've got this. Thank you. Appreciate the assistance. But they did that. They chose not to bid. Okay, that's on them. Ask them. All right? Certainly, we did. We asked them. But don't call up Butters Construction and ask them a point of, would you be interested in this type of work? Well, what are they going to say? Well, yeah, but it's not really what we do. Were you aware of this? No, they probably, he said, no, we weren't because, and even then, he says, I don't want to get involved with this right now. I talked to Malcolm today. Not his secretary, not someone in the office. I gave him the full, he knew exactly what I was calling about. So, and that was a contributor to my campaign. So all of you keep bringing up his name, you might want to talk to the man himself. But, look, I don't know why we only got three. It is disappointing because competition is the best way to go. But this is a worthwhile project. Some of you who don't see it that way, I'm sorry you don't. Some of those who do think it, it is a good project, but it should be done right, I think we are doing it right. I don't know if it's necessarily fair to people who've gone through this process as the assistants, or the city manager brought up, is that what happens if one of these three decide to drop out, and we don't pick up anymore to put in? What happens then? We've, we've already shrunk an already small talent pool. It's disappointing, but I would love for someone to point out where we did something wrong. As the city attorney pointed out, we felt, we went by what the state requirement is, and we went above and beyond that. Our procurement code has, has been the same as it always has been. Nothing was done special on these projects. If you think this is about these individuals that are on this list, and if it's not personal, you're wrong. It is absolutely personal. You can hear it in the shots. You can hear it on, and, and everything that's said. This has nothing to do with this project and the merits of it. It has to do with personal vendettas. It's a little disappointing. I'm going to go with who has not spoken. Vice Mayor Drosky?
I think what we're forgetting in all of this too, is, we touched on it. This was, this was advertised as well. 137 firms received it through our e-procurement system, but it was also publicly advertised in the Sun Sentinel. Anyone who knows anything about construction, these firms have dedicated staff who look for these jobs. They know how to find government work. This isn't anything new. Talk to any of these construction companies, which I have as well. They have dedicated staff to find government work. That's, that's what they, that's what they do. So in addition to receiving it through the e-procurement system, anyone in the entire world could have seen it publicly advertised. The fact that they haven't, yes, it's only three, but they're looking for the $100 million jobs, not the $10 million jobs. And that's just the construction phase that we're in right now. If you go through downtown Fort Lauderdale, you'll see cranes on every, every corner, and in every city in between. It's just super competitive right now, and everybody's looking for the big job, not the small $10 million job. One thing that I'd like to see happen as a result of this, is that maybe we, in the future, we can take our $10 million focal point project, and our Tigner Center project, and our city hall project. And maybe, since I advocated for having a public workshop with Pompano, maybe we can bundle our three projects with maybe three projects that they have. And then we're at $100 million, and we can play with the big boys. But until then, this is the harsh reality that we're, that we're in. Alls we're doing tonight is advancing the three that submitted qualifications. It's now their time to sharpen their pencils and come up with a number for us. We haven't even seen a number. Everybody's jumping up and down. We haven't seen a number yet. Let's see what the numbers are, and have those three compete against themselves, and see where we are then. Maybe we'll like the numbers, maybe we, we won't. But for tonight, we're just advancing the three to go to the next stage. Thank you.
I'm not sure who was ahead of this. Commissioner Hudak?
Thank you. A couple of things. First of all, I'm going to disclose, Seawood Builders did donate to my campaign, and I appreciate it very, very much. I had nothing to do with this bidding process. The fact that they're one of the three individual, three individual companies that bided is, you know, is on them. If individuals do not feel comfortable going to the Northeast Focal Point, that's a personal decision. I've visited the place, and I found everybody to be welcoming, and warm, and having a wonderful time. If you choose to go to Pompano, that's your decision, and that's fine. You're, you're, you're more than welcome to do that. I don't think reopening the bid is, is the right thing to do either. The individuals that bid for this process followed the, the rules. They showed interest in it. I don't think we gained anything by reopening it up again. As Commissioner, Vice Mayor Drosky said, construction companies have dedicated individuals that look for these types of opportunities. There is a construction boom going up and down South Florida. And, you know, I, I just think that it's proven that the, the city has done the, the right process. They've done their due diligence. And I, I agree, we, we've got three candidates. Now it's time for them to, to put pencil to paper and give us their best numbers. And again, this ranking doesn't matter in the end process. It's my understanding that the, the, the winning bid will be the, the lowest cost provider.
Commissioner Preston?
First of all, in regard to one of the constituents saying that she'd gone to Pompano, and that's where you will see a lot of our people, you're right. If, if you choose to go there, you can. But that wasn't her point. Her point was, is that they have more things going on. And it is then, we should ask the question, why do we have seniors going to Pompano, being an active participant in their agenda? And it doesn't mean an either or. It means that maybe we can learn something from the way that Pompano is doing it, that will allow us to hold on to our seniors and try to make them happy. So that was really her point. Second, I got some calls on this situation, of which I asked for a meeting with staff, and I got that meeting. I just suggested that maybe we do it. I didn't really, as I looked into it, because I got some calls on it, the way this was done, when I found out that we had only three, I was surprised. But I looked into it, and I did not see anything that the city did wrong to discourage anybody. However, I was concerned about that. So my idea of saying, you know, maybe we should look at it again, was just for the sake that, of giving, you know, other businesses the opportunity to be a part of the process. But I looked into it because there were people that was calling me, and they were concerned about it. And if a constituent is concerned about something, then the only, you know, thing that we can do is sit down with staff, look at those things step by step. And if you find something, you bring it up, and we deal with it. But I'm not saying that the city did anything wrong, because I did look into it, and I didn't see anything. But I'm just saying, that's the reason I said it.
City manager?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I actually neglected to, to answer one, one question. That was regard the, the childcare center. So the childcare center is included in that request for proposals as an ad alternate, so we can see that cost kind of separate. And then the city commission can make the ultimate decision once those bids come back, and we have a recommendation for you. So that is included in the RFP. And then lastly, just, just a point of clarification, Commissioner, it won't be lowest cost will win the RFP process. Lowest cost would be an invitation to bid process. The RFP will look at many different things related to these three firms. Qualific, criteria distinct and separate from what they're ranked on in the request for qualifications process. But we'll be looking at price, most certainly, as a very important piece of the criteria, but as well as their approach to the design and, and those sorts of issues as well. So.
Commission, what do you, what would you like to do? Let me just say this also. It's really interesting that, you know, we sit up here, it comes with a job, and people are going to make accusations, and they attack before they ask, which is fine. But, you know, let's not pretend there aren't people out there that might have their own motivations on some of these things that come forward before the city. You guys remember when Gene Robb was pushing to sell the fire station over on Federal in Hills, in Hillsborough? Out of the blue, we had no clue why. It was a sudden rush to go to referendum to change the rules, so you could give up that property and sell the fire station, when we didn't have a backup plan, we didn't have any money to build a new station. Where did that come from? Well, it came from one of these community activists who said, I have a buyer for that location, and that's what happened. That's, that's exactly what happened. I can show you the emails. It's exactly what happened. So, you know, it should be disconcerting when some people, not everyone, but when some people come forward with who they think should be asked. Yet sometimes I have to wonder why. When you have community activists that might go to them and say, hey, I need a car. I'll help you land this project in my neighborhood if you buy me a car. That kind of stuff goes on. That's disappointing. I understand people questioning this. It is disappointing we only got three. I don't know what the best solution is. I don't know if putting, I mean, we sent it out to a hell of a lot of people, and we didn't get the kind of return that we'd hoped for. But we have three right now to move forward in this process. This isn't the end of it. This isn't deciding who gets it. This is letting us, as the vice mayor said, take a look at the numbers, see where it's at. If we decide it doesn't work for us, it might, we, we might have to go back out again then, at that time. But I, I don't think that's the time, this is the time to do this right now. Commissioner Hudak?
I make a motion to move forward.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. We have roll call, please.
Commissioner Hudak?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Drosky?
Yes.
Mayor Gans.
Yes.
Item number eight is a resolution of the city commission of the city of Deerfield Beach, Florida, approving an agreement with Bella's Construction Holdings, Inc., for Phase Two of the Arboretum Rainforest Project at Constitution Park in the amount of $130,000, waiving the requirements for competitive solicitation set forth in Section 38-127 of the city of Code of Ordinances, providing for execution severability and an effective date.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Commission. I'm Preston Puizer, Parks and Recreation Director, City of Deerfield Beach.
You promise?
I promise.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor. In the absence of the presentation, we have the presentation. Okay.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Commission. I'm here to discuss the Constitution Park Rainforest Project, Phase Two. The purpose of this request is, we request the city commission waiving the procurement code and approving an agreement with Bella's Aquatic Construction, Aquatics Gardens Incorporated, for Phase Two of the Arboretum at Constitution Park for $130,000. Three years ago, in 2016, Phase One of the Arboretum Rainforest was construction, constructed at Constitution Park. The general contractor at that time was procured via the National Joint Powers Alliance and JPA contract. The Phase One was awarded to Johnson Low Construction in the amount of $138,000. The entire project was subcontracted, subcontracted out to Bella's Aquatics Gardens, which is a specialty company that just does this type of work. Phase Two of the Arboretum Rainforest is funded under this year's fiscal year, fiscal year 2019. The Arboretum Rainforest Project, you can see, is the far eastern part of Constitution Park. This is a locator map to kind of show you where we're talking about. The aesthetics of Phase One, the companies that do this kind of work, really artists, they take the rock, they take the, the land, they mold it into what the final product's going to be. It's kind of hard to just write specs on something for this. I'm not sure how the process was in 2016. But this is how the project looks on the ground at this time. The, a little video for you. This is existing at Constitution Park. If, picture's worth a thousand words, a little video ought to be worth a little bit more. But again, this was hand construction. This is not natural. This is what Bella's Construction built for us back in 2016. All of that rock is hand, hand laid, hand dug. All the plants are laid. And it's a, it's a very specialized field of construction. The goal is to preserve a Phase Two, is to preserve and match that Phase One artistic design, the aesthetic appearance, and combined functionality of the rainforest. We want to match what we build in Phase Two with Phase One. The proposed Phase Two scope of work generally consists of the continuation of the water feature by adding to the existing waterfall and pond at Construction Park through Phase Two project limits. The goal is to maintain the same artistic looking feel as the first. We want it to match. We want it to look like when it's completed, that was one large project. As you can see in the map, the gold portion is Phase One. You see that the blue portion includes that, which is Phase Two. It will include two bridges, and really a lot more project space than Phase One. In 2016, Phase Two included 1,774 square feet of water features, which included one waterfall feature, four weirs, two pumps, and the cost was $138,919. Phase Two, three years later, is 50% larger than Phase One. It includes 2,683 square feet of foot, water features, including two natural stone bridges, which is more than what we had in the Phase One. A new larger waterfall structure, six weirs, two additional pumps, and 150 foot long water course leading to the net, the new pond, for a project cost of $130,000. You know, Phase One was built three years ago. You would think that it would be a lot more expensive just with inflation. We're actually getting a lot bigger bang for our buck by going with the existing contractor that built Phase One. So we feel, we feel that that's a direct benefit to the city by going with this contractor. Parks and Recreation Director and Capital Projects Parks and Recreation Director and Capital Projects Engineer, we are recommending the City Commission approve the agreement with Bella's Aquatic Gardens for Phase Two of the Arboretum Rainforest Project at Constitution Park in the amount of $130,000. We'd like to waive the requirements for competitive solicitation set forth in Section 38-127 of City Code of Ordinances.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone from the public care to comment on this item?
Stephanie Correa. I live in Century Village, very close to Constitution Park. Those pictures don't even begin to describe really how nice this project is. I, I mean, it really is really such a gem. Um, I'm not sure how many people even know it's there, but, um, I just want to say, with everything discussed about the price of things in bidding, this, this sounds really like a bargain. I don't, I, I don't know that much about construction, but for what they did, I'm, I'm a friend of the Arboretum and, and it really is beautiful what the, what they did. And, um, the only thing I, I would ask though, I, I do know that the Arboretum is also an arboretum that, you know, before there was the Rainforest Project, and there are a lot of dedicated trees, um, to people who've passed away and there are signs and I've, I've said to some of the people at the Arboretum, you know, they're a small group of people, they don't have a lot of resources, that I think they should keep up those plaques because they're in a real state of disrepair and I think it's, um, you know, these were given as memorials to people and I think now we're spending this money, it's beautiful, the rainforest, but I think that the existing plaques in memory of people should be refurbished and the people at the Arboretum just don't have the resources to do that.
That's a little separate from this project, but thank you.
Right. I don't know how that ties in, but just, just want to say that, but, no, I can't support it enough. It's really beautiful. If anyone, people haven't been there, there's the sound of the rainforest comes in through the speakers, which is part of the aesthetic thing, which you don't see in the pictures, but it's really beautiful.
Thank you.
Glenn Sullivan, 2377 Deer Creek Trail, Deerfield Beach, Florida. I'm not against this project. I'm not getting a car from anybody for speaking tonight. That's pretty insulting itself there.
It's accurate, but it's not you.
So, um, waiver of competitive selection. This is out of Section 38-118 of the procurement code, I believe. The city commission may waive all or specific provisions of this procurement code in such cases the commission finds that is in the best interest of the city to do so, in that the waiver of competition, competitive selection requirements will not inure to the financial disav- disadvantage of the city. So I looked at the backup information. The detail in the contractor's estimate was nowhere near sufficient for the city staff to evaluate and conclude that the price is fair and reasonable. There were no material costs, there were no labor hours bid, uh, it was a scope of work and a price. And oh, by the way, Bella's did that work for $100,000. The other contractor put a add-on about $27,000 on top of it. So Bella did the, the job for $100,000. I walked it yesterday. Um, I don't see it as being significantly larger. Um, let's see. So does, I mean, I'm not even gonna ask, did, does the city staff prepare an evaluation of contractor proposals without details on how that price was determined to be fair and reasonable? How, how can the commission sit, stand up here and state that there's no disadvantage of the city if you can't even tell if the price is fair and reasonable? I'll remind the commission again that if they waive competition, it is their responsibility to ensure the price is fair and reasonable. And I've done, uh, tech evals anywhere from hundreds of thousands to hundreds of millions and you cannot reach a conclusion with that estimate. So, uh, you either go competitive or you ask for a estimate that you can look at and determine if it's fair and reasonable, or you don't do your duty.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Denise Bogner, 1157 Southwest 26th Avenue. I actually walked through the park last week when the Vice Mayor had his district forum meeting there. Once again, I remind you how long I've lived in the city and how well it looks from what was done a few years ago, so I would hope you would move forward with this kind of money, $130,000 for what can be done there at this time. Please move forward. Thank you.
Joe Hines, 559 Northwest, First, Seventh Terrace, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. You know, I don't know if y'all picked up on it or not, talking about procurement code, we were talking about previous bids on the aging center and so on and so forth. Did you notice that in 2016, the contractor was procured via the National Joint Powers Alliance, NJPA contract number blah, 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 blah. However, the entire project was subcontracted to a specialty contractor company known as Bella's Aquatic Gardens. I mean, I was kind of finding that funny. Maybe you don't, but, uh, the, and they took the job on $138,000 and they acted as a broker and they hired a subcontractor, went in there and did the job and now you want to use him. Well, that's okay. Uh, that's water under the bridge, but there is two bridges here that we're talking about, but we don't know what we're talking about because you say, in, in, in the proposal here, and by the way, he mentioned 150 feet of, of, of water area and this here says 200 feet, so there's 50 feet right there. So something's, something's wrong, but back to bridges. Uh, okay, we're gonna buy a culvert. Now, I'm not gonna buy, I'm not telling you if I'm buying you a metal culvert or I'm buying you a concrete culvert, I'm just saying I'm gonna buy a culvert, then it's gonna be either metal or concrete, I'm gonna split it down half and I'm gonna make a bridge out of it. So, I mean, there's loose ends here all over the place. You guys are, you know, we're providing the rock. We're providing all the boulders. Uh, we're providing the, uh, uh, the, the base rock material. We're, we're providing some, uh, some assistance on this thing. I mean, there's a lot of loose ends right here. This is a pretty cushy cushy deal and it's definitely overpriced. Um, and, and I would, I'd, I'd pin his ears behind him a little bit and I'd make him give me line items, all, all this stuff, and I would really take a hard look at it before I'd write a contract for $130,000 for a 200-foot trench and he says it's a 150-foot trench. So there's something going on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sandra Jackson, 386 Southwest 35th Avenue. I guess I'm a little confused. We just had some work done in 2016, right? So I'm trying to understand what are we doing now as 2018? Are we spending more money to improve something that's already been done, are he done, or they just add to what's already there? That's what my question is.
It's a Phase Two. Anyone else? And close it to the public? Commissioner Preston?
When we have something that reads like this and the public is looking at it, they have every right to ask the questions of how we're spending their money. So if it's 150,000, if it's 100,000, let's just say that everybody agreed that it's 80,000, doesn't really matter. How did we get it to 80,000? How did we get it to 100, 130,000? That's within reason to ask those questions just for, just for, uh, just one aspect of understanding and that is simply clarity. So when the question is asked, uh, and the information is not there, it becomes more than legitimate. Uh, I don't know why it's not there, but it's not there. So, um, some of the comments that were made, um, is correct. Is correct. That information should be there and the public should know how their money is being spent.
Okay. Anyone else in the commission? Commissioner Hudak?
This is a $130,000 estimate. Is there a cap that it can go to or is that just the estimate and it's extra, it's extra, it's extra? I was just curious how that works.
Commissioner, this, this estimate will be attached to the draft contract, so that will be the total cost of the project to the contract.
While we have the scope of the pond, of the work itself and what exactly is being done, it, it is a good point that there isn't a price estimation as far as materials and in, in more of a breakdown that's on here. How did staff come up with the idea that this would be all right to be able to waive that, aside from the continuity concerns?
So Mayor, what I can tell you is that, um, aside from the continuity and the artistic element of this project, um, we have met the contractor out there on several occasions to discuss the plan, uh, and how this will look and how, I've been out there with Mr. Purcell. I know that Mr. Good's been out there with the contractor. I know that, uh, that Mr. Puizer has been out there with the contractor. So we've been out there several times with the contractor on, on several occasions to develop this scope and how this will flow from just next to the pavilion, down into the connectivity with the other pond, uh, the other waterfall, and then down into it, to its own pond. And if you look at the size of the, and if you'll just go back to the rent, well, we'll call it a rendering, of the, the size of the pond, it's certainly much bigger than what we did in Phase One. And so when you look at the cost of Phase One compared to Phase Two, and then if you could just go to the feat that we talked about, um, you know, we're, we're, this is, this is much larger. Now, the 150, difference between the 150-foot long water course and the 200-foot water course, you know, again, this is, he's gonna build this as he goes. So if he curves a little bit to the left or to the right, whatever the case may be, this is, this is more of a sculpture than anything this has got, that, that, that this company's gonna be creating. So, um, you know, for, and then, and what that's not including is the pond down below, which adds to the additional, um, water feature, if you will, of the 50 feet.
Was, was this originally put out to bid in 2016?
This was done, this was done through a, a job order contract. And so that, that's a competitively, uh, it's a competitive contract that's awarded through a, a national cooperative where you use them to provide you with a scope of services and ultimately a contract. And again, the reason that was chosen back in 2016 is because the artistic nature of the project is not, it's not something that you can design and then put out to bid for somebody to build because it's, like I said, it's very artistic.
Okay. So this is 50% larger than Phase One. It has two stone bridges, which the other one did not have any bridges on there. The overall size of this, and if you look at what's been done, project cost coming in at 130 and the phased, Phase One was 138, and someone stands up here and says that this is completely off? I, I don't know where they get that from or what their expertise is on this type of thing, but I will say this, the, the artistic aspect of this is huge. You don't want someone coming in and building a Phase Two and then say, "Well, we can't really get it to match up." It doesn't make any sense. This would have been built in, in one entire phase if the money was there in 2016. Um, I, I don't normally like this and I would prefer it to go out to bid, quite frankly, but I think the artistic aspect of this and the continuity and considering that, looking at the, the size of this project compared to the first project and the prices, um, I don't see it out of whack. Matter of fact, um, I, I think it's the right thing to do. That's my opinion. Commissioner Preston?
When you look at Phase One, Phase versus Phase Two, and you look at the cost, I don't think that anybody would disagree. One of our residents said that he wasn't against it, but he just simply challenged how did we get there? Then we have to ask ourselves a fundamental question. Do we provide any answers or do we just say this is what we come up with? He didn't say he was against it, but he just simply said that, um, you know, being that you're not going to allow it to go out to bid, then how did you arrive at the 130,000? Again, which is a fair observation, provokes a fair question, but Phase One versus Phase Two, just using common sense, $130,000 is definitely within reason, but it's how we got there. And we have to decide, do we owe the public that information? And the answer is yes, because in the end, the $130,000, we're making the decision on it, but it's their money.
No, I, I don't think he was out of line at all saying that. I don't think anybody's against this project either. I think it's a great project. I think most people agree with that.
Right.
Um, I, I think that's completely reasonable. I'm just saying that my point is, you look at the numbers and the size of the project in 2016 compared to now, you look at the overall size and, and what it incorporates, you look at the price tag, which is cheaper than what it was in 2016, and considering that the, a huge aspect of it, and I'd challenge anybody to try to put a dollar amount on the continuity and the artes- artistic challenge of the project to make sure that this is done right, um, it, it, I don't see the number being so drastic that, that that continuity doesn't override it. So I, I think we've kind of explained how they got there. I think looking at this should be fairly self-explanatory that if you had the first project at one price, you get a much larger project and this is a new price. Um, I, I think it's within reason, in my opinion. Vice Mayor Jawoski?
Uh, I, I as well. I mean, I, my eyebrows raised, I mean, because we have this long scope of services here and just a number, you know, at the, at the end, but I think it's reasonably explained by the presentation. I think that's why staff put the presentation together for us tonight was to give us the, the information as to how this, um, uh, how this breaks out and how the Phase Two is larger than the Phase One. So I'm, I'm comfortable with the backup that was presented tonight. I mean, you're, you're including a, a larger, you're doing more work to a larger area at a lesser price, uh, and so I'm, I'm comfortable with that backup. As the resident said, this is a gem, uh, in, in, in our city. It just so happens to be in my district, uh, and so I, I support it.
Okay. Yep. Looking for a motion then?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, Commissioner Parnas, second by Vice Mayor Jawoski. We have roll call, please.
Commissioner Hudak?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jawoski?
Yes.
Mayor Gantz?
Yes. Administration, City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Just, uh, just wanted to give an update, um, as I'm sure this may be on, on your minds, but the amount of seaweed that we're receiving on the beach lately, which is, is really unprecedented and, and it's not, we're not the only city dealing with this. This is up and down the entire eastern coastline of Florida. We have a couple struggles right now with it, one being that, um, you know, the, the folks that go out there to check for the turtle nest typically do that between the hours of 8:30 and 9:30 a.m. or sometimes even later than that. They've, they've sometimes been out there as about 10, 10:30. And then we can only rake the beach for as long as, as it is safe for the beach patrons. So as soon as the beach gets crowded, we cannot operate the tractor anymore. And so we have the very limited window of when we can pick up that seaweed, particularly on the southern end of the beach. It's even more difficult because there are many, many times where we can't get the tractor down there to pick up that seaweed. And so we actually have a, a, a group effort going on, on Thursday to get down there and do some manual removal of that seaweed at that southern end. So just wanted to give you an update on, on that.
I also have an update as well. Commissioners, as you may recall, back in the, at the January 15th, 2019 meeting, uh, for the ones that were sitting on the dais, at least and others that may have been in the audience, we did a, I went in over and overview about a FEMA claim that the city had going back from, to Wilma, from '05 or '06, and went through a history of how later on FEMA let us know that they were de-obligating approximately $2 million of the money that the city had already spent and was reimbursed for as a result of Wilma and that we were similarly situated to other neighboring cities, including Lake Worth and Pembroke Pines. When we tried to appeal that decision, we followed the proper process. We sent it to the state. The state, for whatever reason, didn't it forward it on to the feds. Because of the state not forwarding, forwarding it on, the fed said, "We're not gonna look at your appeal" because it was untimely. Uh, as a result of that, at that January 15th meeting, you made a decision similar to the cities of Lake Worth and Pembroke Pines to collectively join with the same outside counsel and, and file a lawsuit against FEMA to challenge that de-obligation with the understanding that you are likely going to get some money soon for Irma reimbursement and that they could take the $2 million that they de-obligated out of those take the $2 million that they de-obligated out of those funds. So at the time that you approved entering into litigation, which by the way, was gonna be split between the three cities and capped at $100,000 per city, you conditioned the filing of the lawsuit on the city's attempting one additional time to try to communicate and have a meeting with FEMA and to see if there was any way to work it out short of filing a lawsuit. So my update is really to let you know that that meeting did occur. It occurred on May 22, 2019. It was unique that we actually got a face-to-face meeting with FEMA's top brass, including the chief counsel of FEMA, as well as the assistant administrator of FEMA, which I believe is the number-two person at the FEMA agency. He met with myself, as well as the Pembroke Pine City Attorney, the Lake Worth City Attorney, our outside counsel, and a member of management from the three cities, representing the three cities. They did listen to us. They understood our concerns. They understood our unfairness argument. You know, frankly, they're looking at it as we have $8 billion to pay out, so I think they did look at it globally. I wanted to let you know, following that meeting on, on the Friday, following that meeting, we did receive a very cordial letter, frankly, from their chief counsel, essentially saying they understand where we're coming from, but they're not gonna change their decision ultimately on hearing the merits of the city's appeal. So I wanted to let you know that, you know, from my standpoint, I believe that that condition precedent has been satisfied, and so thus, we are proceeding forward with your prior direction. I should also let you know, sort of a side note, FEMA, in his letter on that Friday, did agree with one of the arguments that we made with respect to Deerfield Beach specifically, that some of the money, there was an administrative remedy given recently at the federal level. I don't wanna get too technical, but essentially, suffice to say that they agreed to re-obligate approximately $70,000, and it was based on the timeframe in which that $70,000 was approved as part of the process. So certainly not the relief we were looking for in its entirety. So just wanted to put that on the record. I believe the condition's been met, and I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Vice Muradrowski?
It's not so much a question. I appreciate you giving the old college try. That was one thing we talked about, was giving it one more, one more effort, and it was not successful. It may be duplicative, but I mean, I would like to make a motion to move forward with the litigation, just to make it clear of our stance on this position, just to make, to give you the authority to move forward.
Do you need a motion?
I don't know that we need one. It doesn't hurt, and I would welcome it.
I'll second the motion.
Does it need to be open to the public?
Doesn't. You know what? Let's open it to the public. I'm gonna be conservative. I think there's an argument it doesn't.
Anyone from the public here to comment on this item? So just make sure, can we make sure clear exactly what we're asking to be done, so the public understands?
So, I believe the commissioner is indicating he, in motion to file the lawsuit that was previously authorized, and basically it's acknowledging a finding that the condition the commission previously put on the lawsuit has been met.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you. The public, Mr. Hurs?
Dan Hurs, 330 Southeast 19th Avenue. I would just ask the city attorney, if we are unsuccessful in this lawsuit, if you know of any precedent where the money can be paid back to FEMA with terms, so that it's not a $2 million hit to the city instantly. So I don't know if there's any precedent for that, but just looking down the road to at least keep that in the back of your mind if we do not prevail, at least, to make it a little less painful. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? I'm gonna close it to the public, the city attorney?
Yeah, I could just address that real quick. So the way this works is essentially FEMA's been paid, by the way. So they, when they pay out the state, when they do de-obligations, they take their cut from when they pay the state out. So FEMA is whole, the state is not. So that's why, you know, the issue was, we anticipated if and when they pay out the Irma claim, that the state may, at that point, let's say we have approximately $4 million Irma claim, they would give us a check for $2 million, I'll give it that way. But with that being said, I don't know if there's anything preventing us from reaching out to our representatives at the state level, and also the State Department of Emergency Management, to the extent that they'd be willing to work with us if the litigation is unsuccessful, or if they'd be willing to work with us even prior to the conclusion of the litigation.
Thank you. Anything else?
No.
No? Okay.
We have a motion for second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Parnas, Vice Muradrowski, and a second from Commissioner Parnas. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Houdak?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Vice Muradrowski?
Yes.
Mayor Gantz?
Yes.
Anything else? No? Okay. District One?
A couple of things. We have our Saturday meeting, this Saturday, so if anybody needs to meet with myself, again, it'll be from 10 to 12, please reach out to Erica, and we'll go ahead and get that set up. Also, I've spoken with Mr. Carter. He was a gentleman who spoke today. And I've spoken to a couple of residents that surround that sober home, and I've spoken to the police chief, as well as our city attorney, and I ask you to please be as diligent and as expeditious as you possibly can, because I really do feel for those residents, and I wish we could do more. You shouldn't have that in your backyard. This Thursday, Chamber of Commerce is having a breakfast at the Wyndham. They have it the first Thursday of every month, it'll start at 7:30. We also have the BSO Charity Fashion Show on 6/13. That'll be at 7:00 p.m. at the Wyndham. And also, if we had any updates on the various audits, I know at the last commission meeting, we were gonna try to get a detail of a variety of different audits and what the cost would entail, so I'm not sure where we're at with that status.
I will say this, and talking to the city manager on that, and actually, I'll get to my point, but there were some good suggestions on that. District Two?
One thing that we should always consider in every meeting is how the people feel about any particular issue. Every one of us that was voted into office was voted into office to serve the people, to listen to them. We're not gonna always agree, but we should be good listeners. It bothers me that Mr. Slattery left. And if he left because he has to go to work tomorrow, I'm okay with that. But if he left because of frustration, it is he who hasn't failed, but us. Because our, one of our jobs is to instill confidence into the public, to let them know at least you have someone that you can bring your issues to. And the power does not belong to us, but rather to them, because they're the ones that physically had to go out and go to the polls and vote. So in the end, what is our responsibility? We are people that sit here as a voice for the people. Now, he brought up about the situation, you know, with the investigation, and I brought that up, and I said, and Mayor, you as well, we talked about moving ahead with an investigation and an audit. So I would like to make a motion tonight that, that we, you know, the Joint Legislative Auditing Committee of Florida Legislature be contacted, so to see if they can perform that audit. And I actually believe that our representative, Pat Williams, is on that committee.
She is, and so is Chip LaMarcus.
Okay. And so that, I believe that they should be contacted, so we need to move on that. So I'd like to make a motion tonight that, that the Joint Legislative Committee be contacted, the, all of the information and our concerns be shared with them and get a recommendation. That's first. So if we, if I need to, I'm making that motion.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
And also, if necessary, I would like to make a second motion, and that is, is that we ask BSO to come in and to look at this situation. And I'm gonna just tell you, you know, a lot of this requires thought, and we wanna do what's right, but we cannot risk losing confidence in the public. And the reason that they keep coming back up and keep coming back up, and it can almost sounds as though they're disruptive, they're not disruptive, they're asking for us to be leaders, they're asking for questions to be answered, and it's only right, it's only right that we do so. So if there's a second motion that needs to be for an criminal investigation, then I'm gonna make that motion as well, that we proceed in that way. And then I'll continue with the rest of District Two. So, you know...
Well, before we do that, I wanna give credit to someone who'd like to say that we don't listen to their ideas, but Mr. Sullivan is the one that came up with the idea along that, and I think that's, it's something I talked to the city manager, and we were both in agreement. That was precisely what your suggestion and how we approached that with the audit was spot-on, and it pretty much encompassed exactly what we should do. So kudos to you, Mr. Sullivan, and I would support that. I think that makes a lot of sense. And I think, I think it met all the criteria of what we were looking for. Go ahead.
Yes, the scope included a lot of things that we at the staff level had been, had been looking at. I just wanna make sure that if this motion carries, that rather than developing a scope of services that would be put out to bid for, to various auditing firms, that instead we'd be doing, we'd be engaging Joint Legislative Audit Committee and the Broward Sheriff's Office. So I just wanna make sure that I'm clear on my direction. I know the motion is not carried or anything, but just to be clear.
And mine are saying is, there's two separate motions, so we may wanna address each one of, I recommend you address each motion separately with separate votes and get the details down separately. So I think the first motion was respect to contacting Jay Lack for a recommendation on the audit. That's what I heard.
Yes, and if they can do it, to proceed with it. Okay? If they can do the audit, let's go with it.
Okay. We have a motion?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Okay. Passes four to one with Commissioner Parnas in the negative. Second?
Motion is to proceed with bringing BSO in to conduct a criminal investigation.
Vice Muradrowski?
How does, I'm not against it, but how does it work? There's, I don't, I don't know, can you explain to me, Commissioner, what they do, how you bring them in? I need more information.
Well, I don't, I'm not a police officer, and I don't conduct criminal investigations, but we're going to an agency, we're going to BSO, giving them the facts, letting them know what has gone on, and asking them to investigate to see if they see any, anything inappropriate, and if they were to find anything appropriate to bring that back to the city manning commission.
My only concern with this is I believe there are other agencies that are looking at this, and I don't know if BSO coming in, I'm sure they would hopefully coordinate. How would that work? City attorney, let's say hypothetically, that other agencies are looking at this, bringing them in, does that create an issue for them?
I can't speak to other agencies and their processes and their interactions with BSO. So I don't know that I feel comfortable saying yes or no as to whether it impacts them, because also I'm not an investigative, criminal investigative professional, that I'm not sure. But one thing that I may suggest, just on, from what I'm hearing, is that a scope of investigation is exactly what we're referring to. I heard, prefer criminal investigation to BSO, but you may wanna just expand upon that if the city, if the commission is moving in that direction, to give a little bit more detail to staff to do that. And what I, what I envision is, if that was done, that, of course, the city would cooperate with BSO's investigation, any investigation.
Then let's take, you know, let's find out if there is any other investigative agency looking into this. And if they're not, then we can ask BSO to come in, but let's take a look at that, and we can talk about it next meeting.
Okay.
All right.
That's fair. Commissioner Parnas, did you wanna say something?
Yes, I do. Years ago, I filed a complaint against an individual who I believe took money, and the way it was done is I went to the police, as the head of that organization, filled out a complaint. If that's the case, and it's still enforced, then I don't think we need a vote. We need the city manager or the mayor to file a complaint with the BSO for whatever you think was wrong, and let them investigate. That simple.
I wouldn't take that action on myself without the commission approval on just one.
I'm not saying that the commission shouldn't approve upon it, but it's one individual who's the head of the organization, is directed, in my case, it was by the board of directors, of which I was the president of a group, and they voted that we go to the BSO.
So they voted?
Yes, they did. I'm not saying we shouldn't vote, but one person then signed the complaint, and it was carried out by the BSO.
Yeah, I think there's a way that we could go about it, and I definitely think if, you know, making sure everyone's comfortable with it, having BSO involved, I have no problem with that. I just wanna make sure we're not stepping on it.
And that's why I said, so I'll withdraw the motion.
Okay.
To continue with District Two, whenever we have situations in our city where rules must be followed, and we got people that come and say, you know, "I'd like to have something done," then we actually point them into the direction in which they need to go, so that they, we can able to look at their needs, whatever it may be. Some of my constituents came forward with the idea of a street naming, and I was, you know, happy for them about renaming the street for a very, very prominent person in our community. And they followed all of the rules, and they were told that on certain days that they would be given information as how to proceed forward. Well, that didn't happen. That didn't happen. And so right now, the process is behind, and that's not right. It's not right. Okay? And so, you know, the street renaming goes to the historical committee, and they were given time, a timeframe in which to, to get it done. They said, "We will get back to you in a certain time," and they didn't do that. So we need to get this process moving, so I'm asking staff, if you could reach out to the Historical Society, please, for the street renaming in District Two. We'd like to get that completed, so that we can continue to go. Thank you. And lastly, for all those who did not attend Deerfield Beach High School graduation yesterday, you missed something. It was awesome. It was hell down at Nova, and it was very well organized, and if you're a citizen of Deerfield Beach, you would have been so proud of those kids. We have some nationally-recognized kids that are going on to do some unbelievable things. One young lady is going to University of Miami, extremely high grade point average, she's studying microbiology. We had, I think it was like 12 to 15 people that signed up for the armed forces. Deerfield Beach is not the only high school in Deerfield Beach, but it's the only public high school in Deerfield Beach. One of which we should all be very proud, and one that we should have an active hand in encouraging these kids, but I gotta tell you, they're doing a great job over there. And I was sitting there yesterday during the graduation, I just couldn't believe, first of all, all the people and watching those kids. I have some personal interaction with some of those kids, and to watch them grow over the years, stayed out of trouble, and now they're going on to college. One young lady, one of the ones that I know, she's gonna be studying medicine. Her twin brother wants to be a firefighter. You know, you can, I looked, I told the parents, "You did a good job." But you know who else did a good job is the school system and all of you that said something positive to a kid in a challenging time in their lives. We don't always get there by ourselves. There's always other people who lend a hand, and then if the end result is watching a kid walk across the stage when they call their name, is, is that it, you know, it's awesome. And by the way, that's not the end. Into a phase, but the beginning of another. It was truly a magnificent event. It was truly a magnificent event yesterday. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. District Three?
Yes, few things. Last night, I held a District Three meeting in the Crystal Lake area, and I want to bring out a little bit about speed bumps. They work. I've had requests on Crystal Lake Drive, 13th Avenue, 18th Avenue, and they were put in. The residents are thrilled, because the speeding has stopped. They're four inches high, and if you're going to do 35 and 40 miles an hour, you're going to lose the bottom of your car. That simple. Pay the law or risk damaging your vehicle. Two, I, two years ago, I made a comment about code enforcement, that I didn't see that it's not their job, the magistrate, who's a very kind man, and people come in after a summons and plead, oh, I need six months to fix it, he gives it to them. We took, I took the time to ride with them and work with them, and I'm happy to say District Three's 100% cleaner with bulk than it was six months ago. You can ride down Military Trail, other than pickup day, and not find a couch laying out on Military Trail or Crystal Lake Drive, and it's the same in the Village. It's 100% cleaner, and I applaud the residents who take the time when somebody breaks the law, to pick up the phone and make an anonymous call. There were three couches on Military Trail and Wilds Road, and Code immediately goes and gets the owner of the property and starts an investigation into writing tickets. And when the landlords got tired of paying fines, they cleaned it up. I very rarely now see couches on Military Trail, other than the day they're supposed to be out for pickup. So I want to thank Code for working with us and getting the job done. Now again, speed bumps work, and before they were put in, when I was told, you can't just put speed bumps in, the fire department don't like them, the police department isn't, no. I spoke to the police chief and the fire chief. If they're necessary for calming, they're necessary, and I have no objection to them. In fact, today, they make them so that ambulances and fire trucks, there's cutout for them. Private vehicles will have to slow down, but ambulances and fire trucks can go through the speed bumps at full speed. And I've suggested that we use them for that purpose. Then you have the best of both worlds. Ambulances can get in, the fire department can get through, private cars cannot. So I didn't decide to put speed bumps in where they weren't wanted. The people requested them. They signed letters, they filled out forms, I forwarded them to the city, and guess what? They got put in, and everybody's happy, except the speeders. So if you want to check them out, please ride down Crystal Lake Drive, 18th Avenue in my district, just go a little slower, because there are speed bumps there. And the residents appreciate it. That's all I have.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Drosky?
Thank you, Mayor. I only have one thing tonight. That's this Friday, June 7, at the Villages of Hillsborough Park is the summer kickoff, is from 6 to 9 PM. Bring your kids and families. It's a great event to start the summer season. The ball drop I've been promised is going to go much smoother this year than last year. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Couple things, and I know there's a few things that were not answered for people, but there are a couple points that were made, and it's one of the points that Mr. Cohen had made about tolerance. I just ask us that when we have events and we have things that are going on, that we are tolerant and considerate of everyone in our community when it comes to their beliefs. You don't have to agree, as you said, on issues, but I think at least we should, when it comes to, especially when it comes to religion, we need to make sure that we are not insulting somebody's religion in what our actions are. So that's, that's a little bit different. Somebody walking out of the meeting tonight because they didn't like what they want to hear, I can't make everybody happy. Okay? I don't think I was insulting. I brought up my opinion, just like they stated theirs. I didn't accuse them of a crime. I've stated some things that have happened, and that I can prove happened. You know, look, just because you don't like a decision that we're making up here, doesn't make you right. That's your opinion. And if your opinion is, if you constantly feel your opinion is better than the decision makers here, and if every single staff member's an idiot, and everybody that works here's a crook, and you keep taking that approach on every single item, I'll hear you out, but I'm not going to give it, at that point, I have to say, I disagree with you, and I'm going to defend it, and tell the reasons why I disagree with it. So I don't think we're being disrespect, I was being disrespectful, or any of us were necessarily on that. I think quite the contrary. I mean, our job is to take the beatings that they give out, and that's fine. But, you know, if you've got to constantly remind somebody that, hey, you know, my, my idea is the right idea, then, if they don't agree with you, I'm sorry. That's the way it is. And, and you move on from there. Questions that people have, I don't have an issue with. I do question sometimes what the motivation is, especially when the facts don't really line up. And when people say, well, I didn't get all my questions answered, well, quite frankly, if the public only knew how much of staff's time was spent answering questions for people, and having staff available to answer questions for them, I think the majority of the people in the city would say, why are we wasting taxpayer dollar catering to someone who constantly isn't happy with the answers that you give them? We're going to, we're going to do our job, we're going to answer the questions, we're going to answer public records requests, we're going to do it to the best of the ability. But at some point, you have to say, we just simply disagree on the approach that's being taken. Someone wants to talk about their numbers, and they're an expert, and, because they've looked at the books, and they have, municipal financing is completely complicated and different what it is in the private sector. And if you want to insult every single staff member's here that says they, that you know better than them, okay, you're allowed to have that opinion. I have a very different one, and I'm going to state it. That's the way it works. I don't think that was being insulting, it was just addressing the point. I hope I wasn't at all. I do want to answer a couple questions. Two-hour time limit in the Cove? There is, there is a two-hour time limit in the Cove, but you can't pay to add more money to it, you have to move. That's what the rule is. So there's no place to pay, you're just supposed to move. It's a two-hour time limit. Can't be there in one spot for more than two hours. That rule's broken all the time, it's enforced, it's a pain in the neck over there, but that's what the rule is on that. Park rangers do need to know what our rules are, let's make sure that they do. I know we had a little bit of a mix-up over at Villages Hillsborough Park on Monday, that they didn't open it up early enough, and we had a lineup of boats and different things out there. But overall, I think park rangers have been doing a great job, but if they need to brush up on the rules, let's make sure it's very clear. Mr. Sullivan, as I said before, excellent suggestion on the joint, going to J-LAC on that, that really checks off all the boxes as far as what we need to look at on that. The, let's see, I believe, I believe that's it for now. I think, I think I covered everything on that for the most part. I want to thank Vicki Placid-Picard for the outstanding job that you do on a regular basis. I like to highlight, we talked about highlighting staff members. Your presentation tonight is just nothing compared to all the different work that you do, but having talked to many people in the public about things that are happening in your department and the job that you do, I want to give you kudos and say an outstanding job. So thank you so much for your hard work and everything that you do. And I do want to thank our city manager, Mr. Santucci. So far, you've been doing an outstanding job, and we really appreciate that very much, because this has not been easy. So I thank you very much. With that, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Meeting adjourned.